Good afternoon, welcome to the Board of Education Work Session. Please stand and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today we will continue reviewing the FY19 budget. Mrs. Langcliffe? Langcliffe, I'm sorry about that, Robyn.
That's okay.
Would you like to continue?
I've been called worse.
Try that again.
Basically, I'm gonna kind of go back to where we were in the slide presentation. Actually, go back a slide or two.
Okay.
Just because I have come up with some additional costs, some of the things that we didn't have estimates on.
Oh, okay, good.
Last week, we were able to get some estimates for, so. And you can't really tell, but I put them in purple so that they would stand out, but you can't really see that on this slide.
No. Oh, I see ones in purple. I see a couple.
Oh, yeah, I see that, yeah.
Now, it's adjusting.
Was one that we were looking at.
Langcliffe, could you tell us what slide that is on for even the public?
This is on slide 33, I believe. Let me cut that for... Yes, we...
We probably have a second.
Firm term equipment was an area that we needed to look at just throughout the budget. Custodial, instructional equipment, administrative office. So, I put fifteen, uh, $55,000 in there for that. Retirement agency fee, I still don't have that number. I contacted them last week. They said by the end of the month, we should have it. Today's the end of the month. I still haven't seen anything, so.
Okay.
Non-public placements, this is $155,000. I've increased that budget, and that is based on the current students that we have in placement. And most of them are middle school age students, so I don't see anybody who's going to be aging out of the program. Now, they may move or, you know, come out of the program in other ways, but at this point, I've put in that entire amount. We had already talked about the rest of these maintenance contracts, repairs to buildings, custodial supplies, and the hourly adjustments. The other thing, requests for new positions. The only one that I have changed on here, and I didn't apparently put it in purple on this one, was the last group there, the multimedia specialist, the reorganization.
That wasn't a PIO office.
And I've put $125,000 in there because what we're looking to do is change the public information, change the categorization of that position from what it currently is to a director position, change the current communications specialist position. It's currently budgeted in a clerical role, move that to a specialist role, and then add the multimedia specialist.
So, what is the, who or what is the $125,000 for? Is that for the PIO or?
It's the PIO, it's the re-categorizing the PIO position.
Okay.
To a director.
To a director position. Recategorizing the certification specialist position. It's currently budgeted as secretarial, making that a specialist position, and then adding the multimedia specialist.
So, it's re-categorizing two positions and adding one.
Right.
We currently have two. They're both gonna be re-categorized and one added.
But they're already in the budget. The specialist and the multimedia specialist are already in the budget, so it's just the director that we're...
But not at the level that they're going to with the reorg. Their titles are being changed.
Yeah, I understand that.
Which means their salary probably is going to change.
Oh, okay, okay.
And their duties are going to change, so...
I understand all that. I understand all that. I'm just trying to...
The $125 isn't all for the one position.
No, no, that's for the entire reorganization of that whole group.
And I've got job descriptions for you if you want to take a look.
Oh, okay. I personally would like to see that broken down.
I was gonna ask the same thing.
Thanks, Annette.
If you don't mind.
Annette, thanks, I was going to too.
We need one for Carrie and one for Sharon. One for Carrie and one for Bev when she gets here. Thank you, Sharon. Morning!
If you could break that down, I'd appreciate that.
Good morning. What page of this do I plan that on? Or do I?
That particular $125?
It's under administration salary.
Oh, it's just inclusive, okay.
Yes.
Okay. But it is on our slides.
It's under administrative salary and wages, right on page seven.
Okay. Okay, here we go.
Yep, page seven. The first number in there, basically. It's included as part of that.
I wanna keep tally of all the new positions that are kinda gonna be discussed, not just that department. Everything. I need some scratch paper.
It's the back of the agenda.
Good idea. I didn't get an agenda.
Or write it on, write it on the back of your, um, the back of the page.
There you go.
That way you can keep your notes. I think she's already got it. I put mine in my budget thing.
I think all the rest of this we had discussed last week.
We did.
These are all new. These were, these were ones that we did not have numbers for last week. So, early college academy dual enrollment, we've looked at that, and basically, right now, we're spending about $15,000 on dual enrollment. So, with the early college academy, we're anticipating that that's gonna, that's gonna probably double.
Why is Virtual Academy $291,000?
Okay. There's two pieces to that. $121,000 of that is the actual purchase from the company, and Mr. Paluski, you can jump in here anytime. And then the other piece is there will be two additional teachers. So, at $85,000 apiece, that's $170,000 for the two additional teachers, and then, you know...
So, the $121,000 is for the program itself?
It's for the program itself, yes. There's costs associated with the software, and then there's materials of instruction that go along with it. There's PD that goes along with it, so there's a lot of different components to that.
Okay.
And that's spread through the instructional part of this budget. I've got different pieces listed, so.
Just, Robyn, if I can, just one thing I think is very important to understand about the Virtual Academy is this would be to be able to offer opportunities to possibly students in Queen Anne's County that are currently not enrolled with us.
Right.
So, we had started out with 50 that we think is realistic, 25 at from K to 8, and 25 at high school, and then to be able to grow. So, they would be new students.
Right.
So, there would be a per pupil allocation that we would be receiving as a result of 50 additional students.
Do we have a projection of how many students?
That's what I was just getting ready to say. Do, how do we know that we'll have enough students to pay for this?
Sure. Currently, there are over 250 homeschool students across Queen Anne's County.
Right.
So, we know right there that there is a student population out there that through such a Virtual Academy exists. So, shooting at a 50, a number of 50 students, we think is realistic. Also, it could attract students possibly going to a private school that we might be able to attract back to our district. We're also looking at, although they are students that are home in hospital, it does add another variety. So, but the target is, we know that there are over 250 students that are not enrolled with us.
There's also a cost for the student, say, a homeschool student to apply to be in, so it's free for homeschool students.
Right. And so, what we've estimated is if we get 50 students out of the 250 that are out, about half of their per pupil would be about $4,000. So, that's 4,000 times 50, so that would be revenue of about 200,000.
My question is, why would we hire two teachers not knowing that we're gonna have the students to do it?
We have to give you an estimate of what it would, of what the program would be. So, that's a...
So, the, the program requires two teachers? Is that what you're telling me?
So, there are two components, right, to this program?
Okay.
And one is the online component where it's all online, and those students that are new would draw revenue for us. Yes, it costs something to be a part of that, but they bring revenue back in for us. The other part of that program is for students who are home hospital teaching, who are our current students, and who need additional supports. And so, that is the piece that, that would require the additional teachers for students that we currently have.
Are we gonna survey these 250 students?
Absolutely. So, we put not all of them, all of them. So, not only the, the homeschooled, but those on home hospital teaching that we currently have.
Right, okay, okay.
To see what would best meet their needs. So, we have a better idea, because we're saying 50, it could be 100.
Yeah.
When, right, when, when would we do that? When would we do the survey? Because...
I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna...
Is there some sort of contract that we would enter into, like a homeschooled parent that would lock them in, say, if you're signing up for this, you're signing up for this amount of time?
No, no. Not for a parent that's gonna enroll in the program. The contract would be with the Virtual Academy, the vendor. So, we'd have a contract with the event, with the vendor that says you're probably, you're gonna get, you know, however many students, 50 students, 100 students? And this is the cost per, that we would get per student?
Right.
And the cost to them, so...
My guess, my question is though, what if I'm a homeschool parent and I wanna let little Johnny try it? And, oh, he doesn't like it, so we're gonna back out of it?
Right.
How does that work?
Just like it would any other, just if a parent, any parent...
You dropped out of school?
Yeah, if a parent wanted to enroll their child and then take them out, we can't stop them from doing that.
My question is, is how soon would we be doing this survey? Because I'm very skeptical of putting $291,000 in the budget.
As soon as we get to go ahead, to go ahead and try it and see what, you know, put some feelers out and see.
Well, I, I do believe before we even attempt to put that in the budget that we need to...
We would need some type of guarantee that we're gonna get enough.
That we have people that are interested.
And that's, that's the right thing to do.
You know?
Absolutely, that's the right thing.
Because I think that that's gonna be questioned, you know? How about if we put $291 in the budget? And let's hope not, but how about nobody signs up for it?
Mm-hmm.
And now, we've spent $291,000 and, and two teachers that, that we don't need for this program.
So, this is, that's the right decision.
Right, right.
So, we couldn't do that before we had this conversation with you?
Right, right.
So, that's the right thing to do? So, we can certainly get moving on that?
I think that's a good idea.
With the go-ahead?
I'm curious.
And see what, see what the interest is.
Right, exactly. I think that that's the main thing, is to see who is interested in this before we commit ourselves on our, on our budget for it.
I'm just curious how this even came to be. Was it driven by public input, or did somebody, like, how, why are we, like, what drove this conversation?
So, it started, and Mr. Paluski can jump in when he, when he feels it necessary, but it started out of a need for the students that we currently support. So, we're looking at the students who are served by APA. We're looking at the students who are served by home hospital teaching.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we're looking at the students that were...
The behavioral issues and the medical issues kinda drove this? And now, the, the door will be opened for other people who may not have those issues, I see.
Exactly. So, the way we got to the place where we could extend to students who are not currently enrolled is the conversation about revenue and cost.
Right.
So, for our own students, we know that we need to do something different to meet their needs, because we have an increasing, as you well know, an increasing number of students who are, who are requesting home hospital services, a increased, increasing number of students who are really having difficulty staying on their program because we're not meeting their needs. We're one of the few districts that doesn't have twilight school, or evening school, or anything alternative to meet the needs of kids who aren't making it during the day. And then we thought, how are we gonna pay for this? Well, we could expand our reach, and we could draw revenue to cut down on the expense of servicing students that which we have the responsibility for, for servicing, and this was a way to get to that. But also, having some conversations with our, our partners who have agencies and, you know, saying that parents, there are some parents that are homeschooling their students who, if given an option for a program that's already put together, complete with the computer, right down to the art supplies, or, or music, or whatever materials of instruction that are necessary, would much rather do that than what they are doing. So, that started our reach and our thought about, well, how could we pay for the increase in services that we need to provide to students that we have? And reach other students, and it would help some families.
Right, now, I agree with you too, and I like the ideal that they can then feel a part of the Queen Anne's County. They can graduate, is that right? They could walk on stage. They can feel the support that goes along with being an actual Queen Anne's County student.
It would go, however it is that we, you know, worked out with those families. I've done it in another district where that group, it was about, you know, it was over 1,000 students, 1,100 students, they had their own separate get-together. So, it wasn't a graduation year for them, but they had sort of get-togethers for sporting events that they pulled together because it was a large group. That was about 1,100 students. This, or families, this is not. We're talking 50 maybe, or 100. So, if we decided that we wanna open the doors and say, come on in, graduate with an assigned high school, or what have you, then we certainly could do that.
That's what I was gonna ask too. I was curious what other districts are doing and how that program's grown, and, you know, what kinda costs were associated with that? Because we talked about the low end, like, we hope we get 50 students, but we also have to think about, like, what if we end up with like 1,000? And are we prepared for that? And what the needs are?
And so, I don't think we have, at least we don't have on record that there are 1,000 families. We've got about 200, right? In this small county. But we've got about 200 that we know are out there, 200, 250 that are out there. And we certainly could do some things to make them feel, you know, a part of. In, in another district, in Frederick County, actually, we're going to pay a visit to them toward the end of the month, I believe it is. And we're gonna look to see how they do it. Because I believe they may be the only other district in the state of Maryland who has an actual virtual school.
Now, which county is that?
Frederick.
Frederick County's the only other state in Maryland that has a virtual school?
To my knowledge.
So, we're pioneering on that, then?
Yeah, it's innovative.
That's kind of exciting.
It's innovative.
I have a question though, about, like, how long do you, like, if we would say, just hypothetically, we get awarded enough money that we can start this program, how quickly is it to set up? Would it be in this budget, or were we looking, projecting it a year out? You know what I mean?
I can tell you, I've done it in a matter of months. So, I believe a couple of years ago, when we started having conversations, by the time we started having conversations, to the time we got it approved by our school board, there probably were, you know, two or three months that went by. I literally had the summer to get set up and get those families enrolled, and it was an onslaught. Because at that point, for that academy, it was students from all over the state who could apply to that academy. So, if we did allocate that money today, our dream would be to implement it in the next school year. We wouldn't do it in the middle of a school year or in the summer.
2019.
So, our goal would be the future year, but we'd need our funding in place in order to process that.
That is correct.
Okay, okay. We don't wanna go backward with the funding, forward with funding and the process.
Does that affect their per pupil ratio?
Yeah, because we'd have to count them.
They consider, they count them as...
They're students.
That would be wonderful for us.
Right, so, it would be counted, would be, you know...
So, actually, if we're like a lot of systems, we may have children right now who are taking online high school.
We do.
We don't get counted for them. They're not a part of our system. This could draw them back into our system. We've presented them with the same kinda program. They're going out on their own and finding, we get to count them, they get to be a part of the system, they might be able to walk at graduation, whatever the case may be. It's a, it's an inclusive thing to capture not just our home hospital and those students, but kids who have already said, we're finding our own education.
That is correct.
Homeschool. It's a doorway for them to come back through our system.
That is correct.
Excellent.
I would like to see a survey as to how many might be interested in doing it.
My thing is, is I just, I don't wanna be like the naysayer here, but I do, I do feel like we need to have an official presentation brought to us about this before we can allocate that much money.
Yeah, I don't really know what I'm...
Sure.
I'd like to see exactly how it works.
And let's start with a survey.
Let's get the survey. I think that the survey...
So that we can add to you.
Yeah, the survey is, I think is...
But I'm not sure we're gonna have enough time, is what I'm saying, for you to get this all together by the time we're going into the budget and asking for this money.
To put this money on this year's budget. I'm with you too.
That's what I'm trying to make myself clear on.
A plan, sure, but is this the appropriate budget year to allocate?
Five or six weeks to do it.
But keeping in mind that when you allocate, it's probably not gonna implement till the next year.
But I'm willing...
I mean, we'll go with it however it is that you wanna look at it. If you, if you want us to move forward now, okay, we'll move forward now.
Let's give a survey.
If you wanna say, let's take this whole year as a study year, then we certainly can do that, so.
Well, we might not have a choice.
Yeah, we might not.
I think, you know, when it comes down to money, not...
Right, but I think that that survey is amazing.
We're gonna have to have support to show.
Yeah, we have to have, we have to see that we have students that would be interested in doing it. That, that will be my thing.
Yeah, I'm totally not comfortable with that kinda money forward, and we have not really looked at it from multiple angles.
Right, exactly.
And we have so many other needs.
I think that that is, that's the first thing that we need to do. And then we can move on from there with a presentation to see exactly how it works. But I think that we need to see how many kids in the county, how many families would be interested in doing this.
Right, and I'd like to hear from the families too.
You wanna start with the survey?
Yes, I've personally...
The survey's good, yeah. And also, just maybe hearing from the families, maybe, you know, on the day that we just, maybe put it on the agenda for a board meeting, invite families who are interested in speaking with the board about this. I don't know if those are options, I'm...
Let's see what the will of...
But we could put it right on the survey.
Yeah.
You know, their suggestions, what they would like to see in the program. Would they like to have, would they like to be part of a presentation?
Right.
But just some kind of idea how many families would be interested in doing it out of that.
That's the right decision.
Yeah, yeah. Before we jump in and put that in there.
Right.
Because I think we're gonna get questioned for it.
Absolutely. I mean, that is the right decision.
Yeah, I don't feel good about defending that one. We haven't studied it.
No, no. I think, I think we have to, we have to move forward with that and see how that all works out. I mean, I'm all for it if it, if we got the kids to do it.
If we've got the background and the, the history to show the need, yeah.
And the other thing, we're not behind the trend. If Frederick County's the only one that's done it so far, then we're, you know, we're still pioneering, so...
Yeah, yeah.
And sometimes it's good when, to have information, kinda see what worked in other counties, what didn't, you know, so that we can learn from their mistakes. So, that's another challenge in terms of moving forward and advocating or something. I don't even have other comparisons.
Right.
So, we are a bit of a guinea pigs, and then don't wanna put that kinda money on us to be the guinea pigs of...
No, 'cause we'll be pulled, pulled to the carpet for that.
Exactly.
So, that's why I think it's necessary.
Yeah, I agree.
So...
Get our homework done first.
Yes.
Okay, the next item there is school day SAT. And this is being able to administer the SAT during the school day. And Mr. Brown had put a $30,000 item in his budget, but some of the other things in his budget had decreased, so.
So, instead of the, instead of the students having to go to Easton and Elkton on a Saturday morning to take this test, we will do it right in the high schools here? Is that what that is?
That is my understanding.
We will be, we will be able to do that?
It is literally school day SAT, as if we administer park assessments as school day SAT.
Now, will they pay for it like we do when, when we send them off to the other places to do it? There's a charge.
There is a charge.
$240,000, right?
And that knows all that.
That's what the, the $24,000 or the $30,000 that Mr. Brown put in his budget was to cover that cost.
Oh, so, it would be a free cost to the...
It would be, it would be free to the students then?
And some students will qualify for waivers.
Right. Is that because that's still our free and reduced lunch children? Okay. Oh, I like that one, yeah. I do like that very much.
And then, of course, we discussed the band uniforms the other day.
Yes.
Okay, then there were several other things that, as I worked through the budget book, that we needed to include as part of this budget that we had not discussed the other day. So, I just wanted to make sure that I brought those to your attention. The third-party administrator for the 403B, 457 plan, that's something that we're currently getting involved in. As I'm getting ready to retire, somebody needs to take over that. And there's a lot of laws and regulations that go along with those plans that we need to make sure that we're up to date on. So, having somebody who does that for a living is much better than having it as being a piece of somebody's job.
Okay.
So, that's a $10,000 item. Increase in PD system-wide, and there was a list from the instructional supervisors as to what kinds of PD that they need to administer for next year. A big part of it is the new science program. So, we have included an additional $90,000 for PD for stipends for teachers.
I'm sorry, but I don't, what is PD again?
Professional development.
That'd be for like at the end of the school year, like we've done in previous years.
During the summertime, curriculum writing, all of those kinds of activities that they do.
So, are we paying them to...
Are we increasing the hourly rate? Is that what that $90,000 is?
Yes, actually, we're going from what they would like to do. Now, all of this is part of the negotiated agreement.
Right, right.
Is they would like to increase that hourly rate. Currently, we're only paying $21.50 an hour for any of that.
Oh, okay, that's what that, that's what the $90,000 is?
Yeah.
To increase?
The hourly rate. And to be able to cover the costs of PD that we need to do.
Okay.
Mentors for teachers and principals, we're looking at increasing that $35,000. It's probably been four or five years ago that now we have three years in order for a teacher to become tenured, and we have continued to offer them mentors throughout that, that three-year period, if they need it. And depending on the number of teachers you have, if you have, you know, 75 new teachers in a year, then you obviously need more mentors. But at this point, when Mrs. Pauls did her estimate, it looked like we were gonna need about $35,000 more dollars in order to continue.
How many mentors do we have right now currently? Do you know?
We have 20.
20?
And they do multiple employees.
Okay.
Then the big item there is license agreements, $380,000. And the truth of the matter is, this is something that for the last several years anyway, and I'm gonna say five at least, as we've gotten into the one-to-one laptop initiative or device initiative with the students and whatnot, we've been buying these licenses out of what we, I'm gonna call fourth quarter money. At the end of the year, we go ahead and buy the license for the future year because we can't get it into the budget. I'm not sure we're gonna be in a position this year in order to do that. And good budgeting practices says, we need to get this in the budget. It's a true cost of doing business these days, so we really need to do this.
I have a question. If we went to leasing our student computers and our teacher computers, do we need that license? We still need the license even if we're, we're having, we're leasing that out?
Yes, because this is a license for the software, for the curriculum that they're using.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
This is the textbook licenses.
Okay, okay, okay.
These are the...
Interventions.
Interventions. Drawing a blank on the word there.
That's fine, okay. That's, that's what I was, okay.
And then the last thing there is the group, I just got the group insurance rates from MAE just this week, as a matter of fact. And we're gonna have to increase our insurance by $20,000 in order to make that work.
Our insurance with MAE?
We, yes. All of our, our liability casualty property insurance is all through the great, the MAE group insurance pool.
Right.
And they just gave us our estimates as to what that was gonna be for next year.
Okay, great.
So, then what are we doing to try to alleviate some of these costs? And these are some of the things that we're doing. Um, reviewing all the staffing at all the schools, looking at class sizes, especially in the AP classes and some of the CTE classes. We have some really small class sizes there. We, we need to evaluate whether we offer those programs. Um, teacher assignments, we've been looking, especially at the middle school level, where we have unified arts. Um, some of those teachers are being assigned, doing other duties. And maybe we need to, you know, reevaluate how they're being assigned, make sure that they're having professional duties. Middle school PE classes, we have two PE teachers at each of the middle schools. And some of those schools are smaller than some of our elementary schools where we only have one PE teacher. So those things we're looking at too. Um, healthcare coverage, and of course, this is something that's part of the negotiated agreement. But right now, we currently pay 100% for our EPO individuals. And while that's a great recruiting tool, I don't think that you'll find very many places out in the world where people get healthcare for free. So we're, that's something that we're looking at.
Is that a negotiated item though with the union?
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
So that's, I mean, but that's something that, you know, we're talking about. Um, admission fees for students, we had gone away from this a couple of years ago. We used to charge kids $2 to come into a, you know, football game, basketball game, whatever. And we did away with it, they're getting in free now. We're looking at maybe reinstituting.
I think that's a good idea.
Maybe a dollar.
I think that's a great idea.
You know?
I was surprised when, when my son said that they go to the football games and it doesn't cost anything. Uh, because it's always cost to go to the football games. So I think that, yeah, that's something we have to look back at.
Right, and those gate receipts help offset.
Right.
You know, some of the costs in our athletic program.
Especially when if they make it to states and, and those things where we get nothing.
Right.
And, and yet we're still footing the bill for electric and everything else.
Yeah, I think that that's something we definitely need to look at.
And then. Pardon me?
News line.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have it on my computer.
I'm like, what am I supposed to be looking at?
I was just listening to you, I wasn't even looking.
I was reading off of my computer.
That's all right.
Sorry about that. Okay. Um, and then pay-to-play, of course, that was something that we had instituted years ago, probably five years ago, six years ago.
Been a while.
And then we took it, took it back out, but that was a $130,000 item. So that's just, you know, something else to consider.
I hate pay-to-play.
Yeah, we won't, I won't agree to pay-to-play, we all know that.
You pay to play a sport in high school.
Oh, I don't know, that already.
I've got issues with that. I've got issues with our students paying to get into a game too, but that's me.
Yeah, but that's, you know what, they know, they, they know that it's, it's an offset. You know, kids, I, you know, most kids are surprised that they don't have to pay anything to get it. Other schools charge to get into basketball games and to football games. So, you know, I, I'm okay with that.
I think it's actually good.
Not okay with pay-to-pay, pay-to-play.
It was safe.
Anytime money's involved, there's a segment of our society that gets left out.
This is true, but I like the idea of just a dollar to come to the game, then you're also invested as a kid and you're realizing, well, this costs me a dollar to get in, it's almost a little bit more of a respect factor.
And then they won't come.
Right, but you know.
They'll still come.
Yeah, I think they will.
They'll still come, yeah. So I do think that we need to, to evaluate that, yeah.
Um, and then as we were discussing last time, we were talking about how our funding from the county had been slipping. And I think Ms. O'Connor had, um, asked the question about what the state funding looked like. So I went back and I evaluated that. And I looked at essentially where we were as far as state education funding. Because if you try to do the entire state, there's a lot of initiatives that have been enacted over the years. It would be really difficult to do. But, so I looked at the, the education funding for the last 10 years. And you can see, we actually have slipped a little bit as far as what we're getting from the state. If you calculate this out into dollars, um, I think our high point was, we were at, uh, right here down here on the bottom.
2009.
We were at, you know, .565, or 656% of the state. And if you took that and allocated that to next year, it would be about a $2.4 million difference.
Wow.
That we've essentially lost in state revenue.
With my understanding that, which it was supposed to always be, is that they're gonna tie gambling back to the, to the school system.
What it was supposed to be.
But it was always supposed to be like that.
Exactly, yeah. I just actually read an article this morning that said that there was, um, somebody had put in legislation this year.
Yeah, the gambling money would go back to education.
To put the gambling money in a quote lockbox for education.
Right.
And it would be above and beyond what.
That's the key.
Above and beyond what these formulas.
Exactly, not to use for that.
Because it's just like impact fees at the local level.
Right, right.
We get impact fees, however, if they use that to fund us, they're not in addition to, they're a part of.
Part of, exactly.
And that's really not what the understanding of impact fees to school support is based on.
Right.
So.
Okay, and then the other question that was asked was about what had happened with our enrollment during that same period of time. So again, I looked at the 10-year trend data. Um, and our enrollment as a percent of the total state enrollment, we have also decreased a little bit there too. However, we've grown by 104.5 students over that period of time, which is about a 1.4% increase in our enrollment over 10 years. Um, the state, however, has grown 4.5%. So that's why our percentage of state revenues has been slipping a little bit because our enrollment compared to the state as a whole.
It surprises me, I thought it would be a lot more than that in a 10-year period.
But when you look at the population increase in the county, that is so minimal as well. Our population in this county has not increased that much in 10 years either. It seems to us it would have.
Yeah.
We have pockets where it has, but really.
Right.
And that almost always goes along with your enrollment numbers to an extent.
Right, yeah, I'm just surprised, I, I thought that it would be, be more than, than 100 kids.
I think our, I think our population has only increased about 1,200 to 1,400 people over that 10-year period, which seems unusual. And don't quote me on numbers, like I do.
Yeah, it's just interesting.
But yeah, it's eye-opening really.
Yeah.
Well, we've had a few years where we had, you know, pretty significant increases.
Right, yeah.
But then other years, like between, you know, 13 and 14, where we had a pretty significant decrease.
An exodus, yeah, then that takes away anything you've.
And then it pretty much stayed, has stayed stable.
Right.
Right.
And actually, this year it's up again.
That's interesting.
73 students, so.
We're up by 73 students?
Yes. Okay, so, um, that's all I have for the operating fund. So I don't know if we want to stop here before we go into the construction fund. If you want to ask questions, um, you've all been given a copy of the, the draft budget book. So I don't know if there's, you know, particular things in there that you would like to ask about at this point.
I think, my personal opinion, I'd like to just move on into the construction, that way Beth might be here to, she might have questions about the.
That's a good point.
Budget, that she might, you know, that she pinpointed that she'd like to talk about.
Okay. Okay. So in the construction fund this year, um, we have two projects that are gonna be, that we have requested funding from the state that they have approved at this point.
That's correct.
And they're the first two listed there, the Churchill Elementary School chiller replacement and Ken Island High School chiller and cooler tower, cooling tower replacement. And you can see how much each of those are. Um, 118 from the county for Churchill and 107 from the state. And then 784 and 699 for Ken Island. Um, the next is facility assessment. And as you recall, three years ago, we had a facility assessment.
I'm sorry, yes.
Was that three years ago?
Yes. We were the second county in the state to have a facility assessment done with independent auditor. We did receive, I think it was three years ago, but yes, we did receive the results two years ago, uh, May of 2016. Um, and what that was, the county, if you remember, the county commissioners were asking us for kind of a, a stable number across the years instead of coming there and saying, hey, we need 20 million this year and 2 million next year. Um, and what this did was give us really about 1.2 million would give our areas that are poor or failed up to par. And then about 1.5 million a year, you know, going on from there to maintain our facilities. Um, and we have presented this to the, um, the county commissioners. We actually met with, uh, the county administrator, Mr. Pluski and Dr. Kane and Ms. Langrath to myself and, and Ms. Pullen to explain this. So basically, what you're gonna see up there is 1.2 million for the areas, like I said, that failed, to get those up to par. Um, then about 1.5 million. And the reason you see it in, do you want me to just keep on going or you wanna, all right?
You absolutely can, because all of this is yours.
All right. What, what you're gonna see up there is the ADA, the substructures, substructure, building shell. Those are where the, um, county administrator and the commissioners asked us to break it down into different categories so they could see. Um, when we, we got cut many years ago, that 4.5 million, all of our, we, we no longer have money for, for paint, to paint the schools. I want, we want to get the schools back on a cycle of every seven years to paint them. Um, this facility assessment really gives us a, a 30-year blueprint, which is, is something I'm excited about. And not just for like painting, but for the roofing. Um, our playground equipment lasts about 15 years. And i, if you remember, we've gone through a really robust construction period. Well, we're out of that robust construction period, we're into the, basically the systemic renovations and maintaining what we have. Um, so, you know, you're not gonna see that, you know, 30 million request, you know, coming through all the time like they're used to. I shouldn't say 30, about 23 million. Um, so about 1.5 million would kind of get us to where we're at with that. Um, ADA structures, just to give you a few things, a lot of the regulations have changed, um, you know, with the vans that pull up now and the handicap parking spaces, you know, need to be accessible on both sides, not just on the right side. So we need to revamp those. Um, some curbing issues to make it more, um, user-friendly. Substructure, but deals with basically here at the Board of Ed, we have a wall on the outside of the building that really needs a lot of repair done to it. Um, building shell for $100,000. Um, what we're looking at there, um, you know, downspouts, uh, brickwork, uh, the cupola here at this building that leaks, um, you know, replacing that, uh, which will involve the historic society because it's a historic building. Um, when you get down to, um, you know, interiors, um, that's where we're looking at like flooring, um, you know, ceiling tile, those type of things. Site work, um, that, that's a large-ticket item, but if you go and look at some of our buildings in the parking lots, uh, they really need to be either milled and overlaid or they need to be taken down to the bear and, and redone. Um, this will put us on a cycle of, you know, again, um, doing that, keeping those up to par. Uh, so, uh, and site work also involves some drainage issues, uh, that we would like to correct. The A and E fees, the $20,000, that would give us an allotment of money to, if we have to have documents that are stamped and approved, that would cover those areas. Um, I feel really good about the numbers up there. And what I did was, I went through and, uh, the superintendent and all of us, the executive team met with all the principals. I took their requests from the principals and matched them up and color-coded them to what we had on our facility assessment. And it, so I'm not duplicating numbers up here, it's actual numbers. Um, so most of the areas they had asked for are covered into there. Um, one of the items that you see, uh, equipment and furnishing, I think Ms. Langrath spoke maybe last time about it. We've never had a line item, I shouldn't say never, uh, four or five years I've been here, we've not had a line item that has for furniture. So basically, we're kind of scrounging around, going to fund balance, looking at those kinds of things if we could possibly use that. We were fortunate with, um, the renovation of Stevensville Middle School and, uh, the new, um, when we constructed Sellersville Middle School, to use all that furniture, it's, it's all gone. I mean, we're down to about four classrooms that we maintain, um, at the warehouse of furniture. And it's, it's really something where we need to start putting that in there to get back up on pace. The, um, classroom technology, you see 70,000, that's something else that we, um, spoke to, um, the commissioners and, uh, the county executive, I'm, I'm sorry, administrator about. That really, you know, we've instituted, uh, smartboards, LCD projectors, all those things. Hey, they're, they're on a life cycle too. Um, and that would get us up to par, because right now what I'm doing is, if something breaks down, I'm robbing out of maintenance to throw that into there to fix that because all of the instruction and curriculum is, you know, kind of driven with that. Um, so, um, classroom technology, security upgrades, we are actually.
What was the technology plan active directory, what does that mean?
Can I get to that in a second?
Oh, sure, I thought you were just going.
No, I'm sorry, I was trying to de, deal with my area, then I was gonna switch up to technology, which.
Okay, sorry, I just thought you were going down.
We thought you were skipping that big number.
No, 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 that's actually a really.
You didn't want to discuss it.
Her slick.
No, I couldn't miss that big one there. Um, the security upgrades, as you know, we've gone from having like 40 cameras that didn't work the past four or five years to having over 400. Um, we were currently in the phase now of all the, uh, card readers, proximity access controls, um, that we learned from dealing with reverse evacuation. That 160, 163,000 there would finish up all the security camera requests basically by the elementary school principals for inside cameras. Um, like I know Carol Camp, you know, had requested some at Graysonville. All of our middle school, high schools have cameras basically, you know, everywhere, you know. Um, elementary, just at the main entrances, and that's one request they've asked for. Um, custodial equipment, you know, you're talking for, um, you know, T7 ride-on scrubbers, those kinds of things. You're looking at 12,000, $15,000 a pop. Um, you know, we're not increasing our staff any, we're just looking to be a little bit more efficient and smarter in how we do things. Um, replacement buses, that actually, next, in FY '20, we would need to replace eight county buses, our own special tran, uh, transportation that we use. Instead of biting that off all in one year, I think it would be wise to do half, uh, this upcoming year and half the, the next year of replacing those. And when we replace those, a lot of the IEPs now, um, and some of the medical requests are air conditioning on the buses for special needs. So all of those would be air-conditioned buses, um, you know, because we are transporting students to Baltimore in a metropolitan area, you know, we really don't want them sitting at the Bay Bridge on Friday afternoon, you know, in 100-degree weather on a bus. Um, so I think it would be wise to, to purchase four this upcoming year and four the following year. And we've done that before with the county administrators.
And the 404 is four?
Yes, ma'am.
Great.
They run about $100,000 apiece.
What, what year are they at now?
They'll be 15.
15, okay.
Yeah. So really.
Have to.
Yeah, yeah, this isn't a, you know, hey, we're kind of experiencing problems, this is, yes, we need to go ahead and do it.
You mean by the rules?
Yes, that's correct. The state allotted 15 years and that's it.
Okay.
Um, okay, replacement and maintenance vehicles, we still have equipment and vehicles that are from 1988. Um, and not, not 1998, but 18, I mean, sorry, 1988.
They have to use their feet.
Poor Jim O'Donnell was doing that for a while there. Um, this, this would really get us back on par of a replacement program. Um, same thing like with the painting, um, that we wouldn't be, you know, coming back requesting this every year. We could spread it out, um, you know, and have a cycle of every 10 years of replacing those. And we have some now that have 300,000 miles on them. Um, you know, I can tell you, mine driving down the road, the, the, uh, back door pops open, you know, while you're driving down the road and all the lights and, I mean, it's getting close to 300,000 miles on it also.
How many do you need to?
This, this would be about four.
This would be four?
This would be about four vehicles. And I'm not talking we're getting Taj Mahal.
No, no, no.
I'm talking like just, you know, basic replacement of it.
So we, so we actually need about eight, but you're willing to do four this year and four next year?
Well, four would do us good for a few more years.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
It would put us in line to like maybe replacement of like one vehicle ever.
Each year, okay.
Every year.
Eight was the buses.
Yeah, eight was the buses.
Yeah, I know, I was just, yeah, okay, all right.
So this is all four in one year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that would get us back on par to have a replacement of one like every year.
Okay.
Okay, the big number there, um, uh, technology plan. So if you recall, um, we are, there was currently a five-year plan. All right, we are in year four, next year is the final year of the, the five-year plan. There's 1.3 million dollars that the county commissioners have approved into that plan for next year. All right, that is included in that number, all right?
Okay.
So when I, when I say final plan, basically what we're looking at as a system, and, you know, not just the technology, but the CNI department, the teachers and everybody, are replacing, um, all the middle school, uh, devices, which would also include Sellersville Middle School fifth grade. Um, now, when, when I say we're in the final year, don't think of it as the final year because this is gonna be an ongoing, whatever we do next year is going to affect for the next four more years because basically you get about four years, you know, out of the device.
When you say device, you mean Chromebook?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to be. Whatever we decide on.
Okay.
Um, I will tell you, I, I asked Mr. Coons, our technology department, to go through with each county of what devices they have. And if you look at it, the majority, most of them are Chromebooks, Dell 11. The, the one area that I did ask him to look at was, as you all know, we have the bag issue, all right? Um, part of this would include, if this is the route we want to go, um, a case that goes over top of it. Basically, you know, we would go away from the bags, the case, you could drop it from 10 to 12 feet, it's not damaging it. You know, we've, I've seen them roll out the walls to see what happens. You know, just trying to go that kind of route and see what we want to do. But that 1.3 is really there for that. And we would also like to extend the warranty on the teachers' laptops, um, you know, so that they, they would be covered into that. And there's a couple of ways with that 1.3 million that we could go. Um, if we wanted to say, okay, uh, $200,000 a year out of that 1.3, um, you could go that route and that would include the insurance for everybody. Like, so instead of asking each child to purchase the insurance or parents do it, you could kind of divide that up.
Yeah, you do. Yeah, you do.
So there's multiple ways we can go about this. So, I mean, I don't, that money is pretty much allocated already. Hang on a second, my notes disappeared here.
Maybe, maybe I'm confused, but so you're saying one point three, and you're looking at-
It's one point five, so it's actually two hundred thousand out of our budget, correct?
Yeah, so, the, okay, so when you look at that, extending the warranty for teachers' computers, that would also be replacing one-to-one devices for all middle school and fifth grade at Sellersville, because, you know, they fall into that kind of-
That was the first ones that they got there.
Great, yep, gray area. So, one second, sorry.
This is all inside the one point three?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and Josh has been meeting with, you know, CNI and trying to get everybody's input into this, because when we purchase something, we want to make sure that it already goes along with the testing requirements that we have, the curriculum, you know, the software and all that, we don't want to venture out there where we're going to have to reinvent the wheel on everything. Now-
Would this be any whiteboards or anything classroom technology-wise, just student technology-wise?
No, ma'am.
And teacher?
That's correct.
What their personal device-type things are.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the, the two hundred thousand dollars, that would round that off to one point five million, that deals with active directory. And as you know, we had the legislative auditors come through here, and one of the big points that they kept pushing to us was doing active directory. And active directory, basically, is kind of the Novell system that we have. So, what we want to do is, it would align with the, the systems that we have. So we have multiple, and I'm just kind of giving you a broad spectrum here, think about all the security cameras, think about all the different instructional programs, every time you got to come in, you got to log into that, that specific area. There's, so, when you go in, you have to put up firewalls to protect against that. Active directory, basically, would maintain everything under one system, and all the firewalls are built into it. We wouldn't have to actually go out to everybody's computer, download a firewall, or do that kind of stuff. It is, you know, vetted into that, that system. So it would be basically a single sign-on process, and it would really enhance our security issues that we possibly could have, you know, as identified by the legislative auditors. And this isn't something that, you know, other counties are not doing. I mean, Anne Arundel, they're all, you know-
But he has, this is the first county up to the table.
Yep, it's a, it's a, would be a very labor-intensive things to, to get put in place, but once we have it in place, we would be able to really manage what we have, because we sat in there for quite a long time, listening to the legislative auditors go over this type of, of area. I think it'd be a very positive thing for us.
Can you give me a simple description of how that security would be enhanced by that?
All right. So, every program that we have right now, when I say program, like-
Intervention, I-ready, and then, and then you've got-
Adrenalin. Yeah, the curriculum.
Power school.
All right. That has to have an individual firewall presented to it. Security cameras has to have an individual, and the access controls, so we have all of these systems on our internet, and basically, the technology guys are going through and looking at to make sure the proper firewalls are up there and listed. And, you know, that's pretty-
Labor-intensive.
Hard, labor-intensive and hard to do. This would encompass everything into one, one program.
So it sort of lets programs talk to each other, and so, one benefit of that also is one sign-on.
Exactly.
So, we use one sign-on, we'd make sure that we have a powerful firewall, and protects us from, you know, all of the different, well, viruses and folks being able to hack into and that. Nothing is hack-proof, one hundred percent hack-proof, but it definitely allows us more control with signing in and out of programs, and programs talking to each other.
Well, I would think that that would be an update improvement, as opposed to what we're doing now. So it's not only an asset, time-wise, employee-wise, it's an improvement to our overall system, kind of keeping in today's world of technology instead of yesterday's.
Correct. And it's also a recommendation from the legislative audit findings.
Thank you.
The firewall, also, is firewalls between, like a kid couldn't get into our security system, basically. So there's firewall internal-
All that would be upgraded, yes.
To, to, like, if they've got a power school for what they need, and then-
Yep.
Nothing is a hundred percent, so-
Right, right.
In two thousand eighteen, we'd never step outright, exactly, and say-
This would be a one-time fee of giving, getting us to where we need to be. This wouldn't be a two hundred thousand dollars recurring cost.
Sid, my question is, last year, we had talked about doing away with purchasing and leasing these. Did we ever get a quote or anything on what it would cost to lease them instead of purchasing them? Because the leasee would be the person that would be responsible for doing all that, not us.
I think Josh has a, he's gone through and has all that information, I think that would be a good-
Yeah.
A different discussion to, to bring that, to show you what they are, because actually, I was kind of surprised by some of the different numbers and things that he brought to me, and also, he has a spreadsheet of what the other counties are doing, and, you know, are there fees associated with it, and, you know-
Maintenance packages, how often we can refresh, for whom we refresh.
I'd like to see that.
So he's working, yeah, he's working on it.
It'd be a nice, I mean, a nice presentation.
Yeah, because we did, we, we said it last year, that, you know, that we were coming to this, this five-year mark, and maybe at the five-year mark, it's no longer feasible to purchase these computers, it is more feasible to, to get into a leasing company and, and let them have all the headaches.
Like I said, but you also got to look at what the cost associated with that is.
Exactly, exactly, that's, yeah.
Like I said, he, we sat down for about an hour and a half this morning, he was kind of going over different things and showed me what he had put together, and I, I think it would be a great opportunity for everybody to decide on.
I'm also wondering if the county commissioners might put more in, instead of the one point three million dollars, if they thought that we were leasing them and that we were taking it-
That was part of our startup, so to speak.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, is that standard, Sid, to take the one point three that they've committed and include it in the one point five total? I mean, we don't have one point three sitting in our account anywhere, and we're not asking for an entire one point five, that's the total of the commitment and the additional need.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
And is that standard to list it that way? I mean, it looks like we're going to the county and asking for a new one million five hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars.
We can, I mean, we can take that and word it differently.
I'm just asking.
Hey, this is, that's fine, yeah. We could take that and say, hey, this was in the five-year plan.
That makes a difference to people when they're looking at this list, they understand.
That's a good idea.
At least the county, it looks like the county commissioners are doing.
Yes, well, and not only that, they've committed that, we're not asking for that again.
Exactly. How long have they committed to doing this?
Well-
Is this a-
It's been since they started the Chrome-
It was a five-year, the original plan was a five-year plan.
Right. All that is in that five-year plan. What happens if they decide not to do it?
Well-
We have new county commissioners coming in, just, I mean, that's just the one-
And that's, that's something that needs to be looked at, leasing or purchasing-
Right.
Also, of, and also, are you going to get that one point three-
Every time.
This year, or, you know, would they say, hey, could you divide it out?
That's what I'm asking.
There's a whole lot of options with that.
Yeah, that's right.
That's why, yeah.
It's important, I think, to separate it.
There was a lot learned over the, the past five-year, well, I'm sorry, the past four-year plan that was put together.
Sure, right, sure, right.
Do's and don'ts, and, you know, oopses.
Part of it was that one point three that we're starting now to replace with, originally, the idea was that was what it was going to cost, then that's when everyone, right, everyone would have it at that point, brand new. So you're using that wisely to replace, but it really does need to be recurring, because you're going to continue replacing.
About every four years, you know, as far as, so I mean, the next would be the high school, you know.
Part of the selling point on it, though, I think, too, is how well it was managed, because honestly, originally, it was just to get the whole thing started up was five years. And did it in four, by managing it well, I think, at least that's what I understand.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's gone well, but there's, there's been a lot of learning involved with this, you know, I mean, you know, some schools have bring your own device, you know, I mean, so, there's a lot that we learned, and there's also a lot as far as what curriculum and programs match up to our systems.
Right.
You know, so that I, I think that we've done a nice job of kind of bringing that into the area, so that we're not purchasing something that is not compatible to our system. But, don't forget, you know, all of the state testing and, and all that that needs to be done on, you know, the device. So when you're looking at it, you want to see what's the most compatible with that, and what other counties are having success with, based upon that, so.
Are other counties purchasing their, their computers, or are they leasing their computers?
There's, I went through this morning, just a quick, out of the, like, the fourteen or fifteen responses we had from the twenty-four LEAs, eleven of them had purchased their own. One or two, I know there was one that had leased them, I think Baltimore County had leased, and then several, I say several, two or three were bring your own device.
Well, what were the eleven comments? Do you have any comments on that, as to how they felt about, you know, would they be interested in maybe now, at this point, now that they're into it leasing also, or are they still interested in purchasing them?
Let's see.
I mean, I had to go through them all, but just-
Anne Arundel County had a, basically, a hybrid model, where some were leased, some were purchased. Baltimore County was leased, Baltimore City, Calvert County, Cecil County, Charles County, Frederick County all purchased theirs, and basically, they were all, excuse me, Chromebook eleven is what they've gone to. The interesting other part of that is, Hartford County purchased also, and then he has it also broken down, I can show you which ones allowed him to take them home, which counties didn't, which counties had fees associated with it. It's a twenty-seven-page document. So it, it kind of goes through, I think it would, like I said, be a good opportunity to-
I think that's a, that's a good idea to look and see if-
A lengthy presentation, that's fine with Dr. Kane.
To see if it would be a-
Sid, can you help me with a totally unrelated question to what all this was, but it is on the list? The final, at this point, estimate for the Graysonville Elementary Edition, I was thinking it was around the four point five range, when I went to the presentation, I think that's kind of where we were. Am I close?
I believe you're close.
So the three was our commitment, and the county made their commitment, just because the statement came across to me that was completely a number out of the blue, and I want to be able to-
I can get you the exact number. In my head, it's right around that ballpark.
I'm pretty confident that Carla said we were right around four point three, four point five.
That project is going very, very, very well.
It is going well, and I'm real happy with that, and that's why I don't like statements that are a little misleading, especially when it comes down to dollars that we're responsible for. We've had projects that have gone way over budget.
We have a very-
My understanding is this one has not yet.
We have a very good GC, we have very good subcontractors on this.
Great, thank you.
The neat thing, each week, we have a drone that flies over and takes pictures.
I love that, I love that.
I've never seen a, a construction site that clean and neat and tidy.
Well, I like the progress that we get to see with those drone pictures.
Connaught Miss Paulson's done a very nice job with this.
She has, she has. Okay, thank you.
On page forty-one in your budget book, there's two lineups, actually, that deal with Graysonville Elementary.
That's what I'm looking at, yeah.
There's one under state funding, that's one point two million dollars, and then there's one under county funding.
And, and, and I'm real clear with that.
Funded in the, in the current, yes, yes.
So when I hear a misstatement, I have to be able to at least justify my answer, to some extent.
Right, and you can see the, the funding for, we actually have money in fiscal year seventeen that we used, that was part of the planning.
Right, exactly, exactly. Thank you so much.
Okay, so, back to this, I think the only other thing on this, well, two other things on this list, and I'm going to refer this one to Mr. Peluski, this is the textbook item, we're requesting seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in textbooks.
True. Thank you, Ms. Langrath, I'd be happy to. We now have, in a division of curriculum instruction, we have a four-year forecasting document. So what we've done this year is, we've categorized and organized all of our instructional materials, and have put ourselves on, typically, most school systems are on a five-year upgrade to their instructional materials, we're being realistic and saying that we need to be on a seven-year cycle. So, we've organized and forecasted over the next four years what we believe it's going to cost to upgrade our instructional materials. That number right there, seven eighty-five, is the average over a four-year period. So you can imagine, in some years, it might be a million dollars, and, and other years, it might be two hundred thousand dollars. So the average of those four years ends up being seven eighty-five. I will tell you that one of the biggest, two biggest purchases over the next four years will be elementary mathematics, elementary mathematics is now up for adoption, is actually up for adoption this year, but we held that off because, A, because of the pure cost, that would be about a half a million dollars, and then you include professional development. We also have to consider how much change at one time, so we've kind of held off on that, but that is, that's a big number in the next four years. Also, our elementary reading program would then be up again, that's about a million dollars in and of itself. So those are two big costs over the next four years. I'd be happy to share, if you really want to get into details of, you know, each content area and what we've projected year by year, but that is the average over the next four years of, of what it would cost. I'll find, the last thing I'll say, some of our instructional resources are nearly thirty years old, fourteen years old, fifteen years old. We have to get on a cycle to upgrade our resources for, for our students. Thirty years old to have an out, that's completely outdated resources, quite frankly, that's unacceptable.
And we don't have enough of, because they're so old.
Question that always comes up, though, is, you know, we're buying the computers, so are these the elementary, primarily elementary books, because the computer is supposed to tech book concept, are supposed to-
Sure. So, so, to that, we've, we've prioritized that everybody gets a little bit of everything. So you'll have everything from AP texts to high school texts to middle school, and certainly the elementary area that would be in there as well.
It's kindergarten.
So there's a little bit of a balance here, because, one, although everybody wants to go a hundred percent digital, and in some cases, our resources that we're looking at are that way. In other cases, they're not, it is actually a, a, a textbook. When you get into some of our career and technology education courses, it's, it's a physical textbook. If you look at the research that's out there, the research is really about blended, it's a little bit of both, it's not all one way, and it's not all way the other, and I think that's something that we have to take a look into. The other thing that we're looking at as a cost-saving measure is what's known as open educational resources. As you know, there's a flood of resources out on the internet. The danger with that is, is that they're not a hundred percent aligned, and so that's the issue. So when folks talk about, oh, it's great, because there's all these resources that are on the internet and they're free, yes, that's true, but the danger we run into is, it takes a lot of work to vet those resources to ensure that they're a hundred percent aligned to the standards. And that's where we can get into misalignment, kind of come back to the curriculum audit and why all that language is important, but we're looking at that. But that's intensive people hours to review that material to make sure it's aligned for teachers.
Mr. Peluski, what is it, third, three-twelfth that has computers now?
Yes.
It's still K through two do not have computers.
They, well, they are, there's not an individual device.
I mean, in the classroom, but not.
There, there are a lot of iPads.
Right.
So, one of the things that we're looking at, what's the current research that's out there? We've had a lot of requests, so when Mr. Pender talks about the technology upgrades, the seventy thousand dollars there, we've had, through our budgeting process with our principals, they've made requests at, at K to two, and so, we're reluctant to say, at one school wants, wants this device, and another school wants this device, what's the research out there that's, that's best for K two?[1722.54] And so you also have to look at developmentally appropriate. Uh, so a lot of our, of our, of our students at that level are engaged in iPads. You know, the KRA, the kindergarten readiness assessment, which teachers use, that's, that's given on that device. But yes, three through twelve, uh, they have a device, but remember only grades five through twelve, they go home.
Take them home, right.
Uh, we did not feel it was developmentally appropriate for three to four for that to go home. Um, and it gives something for fifth graders to look forward to.
That's right.
Along with the blended model, a lot of the textbooks, publishers will have an online component. So they'll have the physical book with online components to that book. So it sort of does both. You don't have to choose one or the other with interactive pieces.
And, and to Dr. Kane's point, I would say that's almost standard today. That if you buy a physical textbook, it's coming with some online component. And then some resources are completely a hundred percent virtual.
And does this conclude, are we buying any consumables?
Ye- yes, uh, it, well, it's a good point, Ms. George. When, when we go through the process of what we call single textbook adoption, so if elementary mathematics is up, then we'll seek out four or five vendors that say Queen Anne's County is up for middle, you know, elementary math adoption. We'll seek from vendors, the teachers will do the review process and then vet those materials, pilot those materials. So in that process is, is when it gets determined if there is a consumable, that would be a part of that. And then that would be part of our projection. So we're actually, this number is our best guess at this moment on, on what those elements would cost. Then that's where we get in a negotiation piece with an individual vendor. If it's, you know, like an elementary science, there's an online component, there's a physical kit component, and there's a consumable component. Now we're in the position that we're able to look at all of our instructional resources that, that were organized to be able to see and project, these are licenses agreements that we have to have every year, or, or we purchased this over a four-year period. We know in four years that's up to renegotiate. So we're in a much better situation with our instructional resource, at least of knowing what we've got and what we're using, um, in order to move forward.
I just recommend we're, we are going to need to defend that seven-hundred-and-eighty-five and-
I'd be happy to.
Okay, that's how I'm gonna have a better picture of what that money buys, you know, like mostly elementary for the new math coming out, you know, that kind of stuff. It will help us with defending.
Especially with the county commissioners knowing that they're giving us one-point-three million dollars for computers. But maybe not realizing that it's K through the two that are the only ones that don't have the computers. So we have to provide books.
But that seven-eighty-five also includes our higher level grades that also need a book.
Exactly, exactly.
There may be a course that has to still have the physical book. And I think that's the, um, idea that what we have is outdated and we don't have enough of books we need to meet the enrollment level. Because of the age usually, and when they were birthed.
Quite frankly, we're, we're, we're behind in, in some of our areas that we have not kept up with.
Exactly.
And to put a resource in a child's hands that's thirty years old.
That they have to share with five people.
We've identified new planets.
Yep, thank you.
That's right.
Thank you.
And in a thirty-year period. So, uh, I would be honored certainly under superintendent's leadership, um, to, uh, maybe in our weekly update, if you would like to see, we can link that in and you can see our forecasting of what specifically-
That would be great, I'm just looking for some talking points in case we were asked about that. That's one thing the parents are like, what are you doing? Thank you.
Okay, and then the last item on that list, um, I added the band uniforms as a-
We were wondering about that.
If the commissioners, you know, fund that, or if we need to, you know, bring that back into our operating budget to fund that.
Well, well, their question will be, why do we always put it on the construction budget? Just because-
Cause it's just a one-time in fifteen years, it's not renewable.
Very good, very good.
It's not an ongoing.
My question would be, where would we put that if, if they don't?
If they don't.
Well, we would have to put it in the operating budget, but it would still come under a line item that would be a capital line item.
Oh, okay, that's, I, that's what I'm, okay, okay, all right, okay.
Thanks, Robin.
So essentially, that's our budget presentation for you. So at this point, we've given you, between today and last week, we've given you all kinds of background information, both at the county level and for the Board of Education. We've given you revenue projections, we've given you expenditure projections, and we've given you trend data. Um, that was posted to, um, and actually I printed a copy and sent that to you along with the budget book. So now we need input from you. Are there things that we have talked about that you feel we should not be pursuing at this point in time? Or are there things that we have not talked about that you feel we should be pursuing at this point?
And, and adding to that conversation, we really do need to talk about what the plan is gonna be if in fact we don't get requested funding from, um, the county. So what's the backup? Because I have committed to, and I'm sure you are on board as well, being as transparent as possible with regard to what we may need to do to make up for funding if we don't get our request. Not as a threat, but just the reality, there are things that-
Well, could I suggest?
They're not going to accept that.
I can tell you right now, four million dollars over MOE is going to, we're going to get laughed right out of that building.
But could I suggest that we do our-
So this is where we need to-
That's this conversation. We do our deletes first.
Can we break and, and go to lunch?
Yes, but can I make my suggestion? We do our deletes, we come up with a number, and then we present our plan ideas if we aren't funded. There's no sense in doing a plan idea on money that we're gonna cut out anyway, or may come out anyway.
That's the process, so the process is-
Okay.
We talk about what your will is to approve, and then we get down to a figure, and then we present that. And then, but with that presentation, based on what you approved, then we say, okay, because they want to know what's gonna happen.
What we go, thank you.
Where, um, where is the, uh, the teachers, um, in all this? Because we haven't seen any requests from them.
What do you mean?
Has Mr. Farley met with them with negotiations? We don't have anything.
No, remember, we have that upcoming. So what we did was we gave you an estimate for the going, you know, what you've done historically over the past, so one percent in the steps. So we've given you the estimate for that, um, in lieu of, and, and we did mention that too.
And when are you, uh, when is Mr. Farley meeting with?
I believe it's next, is it next week?
I think we meet on the eighth, I think, is when they're gonna present their requests. I think that was the date that we set.
All right, so, where are we gonna break?
And we did have a conversation with them to let them know that that's what we were doing.
Okay, all right, okay. So we'll take a break until, uh, one PM, and we'll be back at one PM. Okay. Uh, welcome back to the afternoon session of, or work session, I'm sorry. Um, just wanted to let everyone here know that, um, we've received an email from Greg Todd that, um, asking Dr. Kane and Ali Assan and, um, two board members, and Robin, to join Steve Wilson and Jack Wilson, uh, for a lunch on the second Tuesday that they meet. This is just, um, so that we can get together, we had requested, uh, speaking with them a few months back. And so just wanted to let all the board members know that Sharon and myself have volunteered to do this with, uh, Dr. Kane.
What was the date you guys were going?
Um, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna find out for sure.
Okay.
Okay, so, Dr. Kane, would you like to, uh?
So we just need to begin our discussion about the priorities that we want to, um, consider in the, in the budget request and really have some discussion about, number one, where your questions lie. Number two, what are priorities for you? Because really at this point, you know, we don't know, uh, what the end is gonna look like. But what our responsibility is, is to request funding for our priorities, the things, number one, that we have to do in, in order to do business first. Of course, you know salaries is always a big-ticket item, healthcare is a big-ticket item. These are things, these are costs of doing business. And following that are the, I'm sorry.
Benefits.
Yeah, absolutely, it's part of the salary package. Um, and, and part of that has to do with our priorities. So we've introduced some staffing, um, requests, some program requests, uh, that we've gotten from schools. A little reorganization, in particular, one that, um, has a funding impact with the Public Information Office, as you know. And, um, we've made some other moves, I'll say. For example, we wanted to move technology from under operations and put it under instruction. It doesn't cost anything, that's just a reorganization, which is part of my prerogative, but I just wanted you to know about it. And, uh, so we need to have some conversation with regard to the priorities that we put forward to you.
So can, can we start with questions? Can we go around the table and start with questions?
Absolutely, we can. And, and I heard earlier today, uh, Ms. Harlow, that you may have a desire to go through the bu- the budget book, page by page, and if you want to start there, that's gonna keep us in order from going from one item to another item.
I think that's, um, I think that's a great idea, because we need to, we need to stay on focus as to all of us being on the same thing. So that's probably-
And it's easy when we have a stopping point to pick up.
Exactly, exactly. So, um, yes, I think that that's probably where we should start them.
And anything none of us have a question about, we can just keep on moving, right?
Right, right.
You had one question there, that maybe this happened before I got here, was the Maryland Healthy Work and Finals Act, did you come up with a potential figure for that?
We were working on it, where are we with that?
Yes, we did actually come up with a potential figure for that, and it's, it depends on how you look at it because if we were to take all of our, um, employees, and there's, there's a limit, they have to work twenty-four hours a week in order to be eligible, and there's a couple other qualifying things in there. Um, if you take all that into consideration and everybody received one hour for every thirty hours that they worked, and they got paid for that, or they used that time next year, then that would be about a sixty-thousand-dollar item. The question is, are they really going to use that? They might earn their sick leave next year, but when is it gonna get used? So do you put the full sixty-thousand dollars in the bu- in the budget? Or do you put some portion thereof, assuming that some of them will not use the sick leave that they earn? So, but it's about a sixty-thousand-dollar item based on the number of hours that people worked last year, assuming that they'll work the same number of hours in the future.
And Ms. Langrath, have you had conversation with any of the CFOs, um, across the state with regard to how they are estimating the cost?
Um, I have, and actually I have a meeting set up next Thursday, I believe it is, where all the, um, the counties on the eastern shore are gonna get together in Caroline County to have that discussion. And how we're gonna track it and how it's going to be implemented in each of the counties. So we're, you're estimating about sixty thousand.
All right, so, where are we gonna start, page three, four, five?
We can start with page three.
Yeah.
Um, unrestricted revenue page. Top line there is the appropriation from the county and the one point, the, the requested increase, um, one-point-three-eight-nine. That is what the maintenance of effort number is. And then you can see there what the request over maintenance of effort would be if we kept everything that's currently in this budget in, which would be almost four million dollars, six-point-nine million. Uh, the state funding, they've given us their preliminary projections, and you can see what they are. We expect an overall increase in state funding of three-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars. And then other funding, the only thing that dropped out there was, excuse me, how much we had put in, um, in the current year out of our fund balance to, to keep those, um, media specialists in the budget.
With that state increase, um, so the three-point-nine is just over county MOE, right? Is that state increase considered in there too, or, I mean, with the bottom-line figure of what we're going over? If they only gave us MOE?
If they only gave us MOE and we got the state money, then we would have one-point-seven, one-point-eight million dollars new money next year. Right, and right now, with everything that we have in this budget, um, we're looking at a five-point-four million dollar increase in, in the overall budget.
So the three-nine-five-six is, is really over that?
The addition.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, so, so the next two pages are really just summary pages, actually the next three pages. So if we flip over to page seven, this is where we get into the meat of what's in the administrative budget. Um, we've got salary increases in here, and then under the first line item there, central office administration, that would be where we would add in the public information, um, officer and the multimedia specialist would be, and the communication specialist, that's where those three would be, and the revamping of that. So there's a hundred, out of that hundred-and-sixty-se- sixty-eight thousand increase, a hundred-and-twenty-five of it is for basically revamping that office.
I really feel that, and this is just my personal opinion, we don't have any room currently in a budget request for very many additional positions that we don't currently have. My personal opinion is priorities are student classroom teachers. And if I'm correct, we have twelve built into this budget, twelve requested new teachers, is that correct?
Six.
Oh, six. They, they requested thirty-five across the board. Where did I get twelve?
There's overall, there's thirteen new positions in this budget, um, and we can-
Maybe that was it, six of which were teaching positions?
Correct, because there was two, um, maintenance positions, there was a, uh-
Oh, yeah, when you broke it down to that, yeah.
What's that?
APs.
Yes, um, assistant principals.
Right. Well, I was gonna get to that.
Yeah, when we get to that, we'll-
I was gonna get to that in a minute.
Were the classroom teachers, they were, they were both program teachers and classroom?
Is one that, um, Kent Island Elementary School, I think that one was, might have been a second grade. Uh, Kennard Elementary School, I think fourth grade. Uh, Stevensville Middle School ELA, and we may have a, a solution for that, not quite sure. Centerville Middle School for Math, Queen Anne's, uh, High School Computer Science, and, uh, point-five-point-five, which equates to one-point-oh ELA in Social Studies at the high school, Queen Anne's.
So it was two main, two, two maintenance people, six classroom teachers, two assistant principals, that's ten. Where were the other three positions? Oh, PIO was one, help me with the other two.
What's the driver trainer for?
Driver trainers.
Oh, somebody to train the class drivers, okay.
We used to have two, we made a budget cut down to one, and it's been a struggle.
Okay, okay, and the last one would be?
There are six additional teaching positions, two assistant principals.
Those are both at the high school.
Nurse.
Nurse, that's right, thank you, thank.
Two maintenance, one driver trainer.
Can you pop that up there?
Is that technology at the high school, is that the one that everyone is sending the emails because Kent Island has computer science? Okay, okay, cause that's a must.
I really think that it's important to focus on positions that are going to affect children directly first.
Absolutely.
Yes.
First, and then grow from there.
I, I completely agree.
So if we prioritized those thirteen that way?
That's how I'm saying, that's how I prioritize it, as the ones that are most important are the ones that are working with children directly.
I agree, I agree.
Then we can expand on that.
Then we do that, that's right.
However, we are discussing the APA site with the nurse. And when we hop over to the principals.
But wait a minute, we haven't hopped over there yet.
I know, but that, there again, that's going to be a part of the direct impact on students.
Well, no, I mean working directly with students.
Oh, gotcha.
You know, like a classroom teacher is what I'm saying is number one priority.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
And I guess where, where we go with that procedural is, we make it clear to her, those are the priorities, but if all of those positions are important, they could show up in the budget.
We get them all.
As proposed budget, but then that's where we start eating away on them if we don't get that.
Yeah, yeah, based on our priority.
It's not like we have to pull everything out.
Right, right.
But we still, we should really, we have to down this sum because five, they're not gonna fly, that's not gonna fly.
I'm just thinking from a-
You're talking three million dollars over almost four thousand.
From the standpoint of someone who represents the constituents and the taxpayers of this county.
Right.
We have a fiscal responsibility to put forward a budget that is as fiscally responsible as we deem we can.
Right, exactly.
Two years ago, it was around the four-point-five million dollar mark. Last year, it was one-point-six. We historically know how both of those budgets ended up. We've been coached to put forward our bare bones, minimum that we need to status quo, and any improvements we feel are dire. Not what we'd really like to see, what we must see.
Right.
So if we put forward one-point-six last year and four-point-five the year before, we need to justify what we put forward this year based on our needs. And I don't think jumping from one-point-six as our needs last year can be reflected this year in a four-point-whatever or three-point-whatever request. I think we need to be backpedaling towards, um- I think we need to be backpedaling towards no fluff, no, no big additions, no big new departments, no big new categories, no big cushion.
I agree. I mean, I, I wish though that, I'd like to present, I mean, ultimately, it would be wonderful if we could present this, say, this is what we need.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, we know what we're going to get.
Right.
Publicly slammed for doing it, even though that's what we need.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not right, but.
Knocked down from 35.
I know. It's such a, you're such a conundrum, like, it's like, every year, we're only asking for bare bones, how can we ever improve? And we can't, and it's so frustrating.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Because the, the classroom teachers are, we have increased enrollment of kids, I mean, that's what we need, that it has to be, has to happen.
That's right, that's right, absolutely.
And then, when you look at all this stuff, the superintendent's narrowed it way, way down.
Right, right.
When you say PIO, I mean, you think about it, what is our problem? A lot of communication problems we have.
Right, absolutely.
So, I mean, and, and then we're always asking her to do more, and then we identify in our emails to her that we've screwed this up, you know, we didn't hear about this, I mean, simple things like that, a PIO, an extra person doing what?
I agree, I mean, if, if, if we had the money, it's like, you can't go to Disney World if you can't pay your mortgage, you know what I mean? Yes, I want to go to Disney World, I want this budget to be fully funded.
Right, right.
But you know, it's not.
But as far as.
That's a new one.
As far as the department would go.
You're going Hershey-Pope.
Can we get by with, can we get by with two in the department rather than three, one being a director? Can we make improvements within our teaching staff with six classroom teachers even though we've been asked for 35? Those are our challenges, so.
Those are also our most important.
Absolutely.
That's what we're, we need to fill those positions before we fill anything.
I agree.
And we've always known that we have problems when we add people to central office with our county commissioners.
Right.
You know, they.
They already think we're heavy at the administrative end.
That is always the place that they want to see cuts.
That's exactly right, and our constituents feel the same way.
So, part of, and I don't mean to cut anybody off.
No, no, please.
Part of the rationale behind the positions that you see here, one, yes, need for students, that's first, that's very clear. But the other piece is, in listening to the public, when they spoke very clearly in the budget survey, and the public was interested in low class sizes, you know, and that was one of the considerations here. Now, when we have situations where the class size doesn't warrant, you know, that course to be continued, then we take that action accordingly.
Right.
But that's what you're seeing here. And what you also want to be cognizant of is to show the actual cost of central office, which we are well within a normal range, I mean, we've got, just like anybody else. So, I know, so what I'm saying is, I'm confirming your argument.
Right.
And I'm also acknowledging the perception that is out in, you know, in the county government with the fact, or the notion that this district is top-heavy. When you show the data, and you show the numbers, and you show where as transparent as can be about the cost of central office, it is nowhere close to exorbitant. In addition to that, we got so many people trying to do so many things that we are, we're borderlining on ineffective in some areas.
And we've been slammed for that in the audit, absolutely.
Exactly.
We have an audit to support that statement, Dr. Kane, thank you very much for bringing that forward.
Exactly, so, I, I am of the mindset, and it's your will, because I'm not, I don't vote. I relate a message. But it's your will, but if you don't ask for what you need.
You're not going to.
Then you're not ever going to get it.
That's correct.
And if, and if we're good, if our language for this district wants to be status quo, if that's what we want to have, then we keep doing, we keep getting, we get zero.
And I don't agree with that. We want status quo and what we need.
We don't want status quo.
We want what we need. Status quo has never been what we needed.
Exactly.
That's the issue.
Exactly. So, you know, you weigh that against being fiscally responsible, and you put your information out there for all to see and to question, and let the chips fall where they may, but I think the mindset of not asking for what you need for fear of somebody thinking that you are being extravagant, when you have an argument that, that, you know, doesn't support extravagance, I think that is the wrong approach.
No, no, I didn't mean to portray that, I meant that we could, we could support a fiscally responsible attitude towards whatever we put forward, and be able to support the need for and why the current status quo is not meeting our need. That, that's, I think, it in a nutshell. So, again, I know that we've got these positions, but like, finance department on page seven, 6.0, is that a half a position, is that a new position? I know your department is only one person.
I think that's six people.
Yeah, that's my, that's my question, because now we've got 202,000.
Do we have six people in finance right now?
How many people are in these positions now?
We do have six currently.
These are already, all these are already people in, employed with us.
Not increasing, okay.
The only one that is an increase there would be the multimedia, and it says medial, but media position specialist, that would be, that would be the one position that was increased. And then, some of these other positions, the public information officer and the communication specialist.
Okay.
Those salaries will have changed some.
Okay.
Right.
But it's not an additional position.
Okay.
The 14 under secretary clerical.
That's what I was talking about, yes.
Okay, and that's how they're broken down, there's one in the superintendent's office, there's four in.
And there are, all these people are already employed here.
Yes, they're already.
Okay, okay, that's, that's what I was trying.
And that's why we don't see any increase out beside them.
The multimedia specialist is the PIO, is that what you're saying?
Well, there is an increase.
At the top, we do.
Right, but she said that was, this was an add, multimedia specialist.
This would be a brand new.
Is an additional position.
Yeah.
That's the reorganization of the PIO.
So, I think that's what I would like to see out of this list, which ones are new? So, this one is new, multimedia specialist is an additional position that we don't currently have, correct?
Correct.
And then.
All these other positions we have.
Right.
And the only thing that's showing here as salary increases are where we have put in money for what might come through negotiations.
New and increases, okay.
Right.
So, then, when we get to 14 clerical, those all exist.
Yes.
We're only going up by $33,921, but why are we going up $33,921?
It's all salary improvement.
Salary.
Those 14 people will get salary increases that will equal $33,000.
Are they not on the step schedule?
They are, that would be their step.
Okay, okay, that would be their increase.
That would be their step, and if there's a percent.
No additional positions, but.
Was it the 1-1-1?
One and one.
Just one and one, not 1-1-1.
Not additional for those that didn't get.
Correct.
Yeah, I think we had to back off.
Robin, what is Mr. Straight's title?
Mr. Straight is currently the public information officer.
Oh, that's a job.
Coordinator of Public Information.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
I was just assuming he would be multimedia since he's.
And then, Dr.
And we don't want to.
Dr. Pearson's, which one's her?
Special personnel. Yes.
No, I just was wondering what his title was.
I was wondering in breaking down, like, the teaching staff, if we would then say, okay, well, this would be a priority in this, and so we wouldn't be looking at a $492 number, when do we maybe talk about that?
The classroom teachers?
Oh, she just said we're not going to get into specific personnel.
No, no, no.
Oh, you mean individual names. Oh, I thought you meant positions, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just wondering what Mr. Straight did over there. That's all.
Okay, so, we good on salaries there?
Yeah, I think so.
So, we've got legal services, we've talked about the testing, we've talked about the other contracted services, which would be the third-party administrator for the 403B 457 plan. So, and I'm just looking at increases, so if you have questions on.
Right.
Any of the other items on the page, please stop me at any point in time.
Right.
But that's easy for us to figure then, because we know not increases are MOE, basically.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, so, the next page, the only increase we have is mileage, and we've talked about the increase in the mileage rate has gone up. And then, on page nine, the only increase that we have is administrative office equipment, and again, we've talked about that. So, overall, in administration, we're looking at $253,000 increase.
Why does we have administrative, oh, that's the furniture, correct? The administrative office equipment?
Yes, yes.
Why wouldn't that be in capital? It's furniture.
Oh, there is an operating, I mean, the replacement of, you know, chairs or.
But it's not something you replace, like, every year, right? I mean, in administrative, I mean.
Well, no, but there's probably some that need to be done every year, you know?
Just curious.
I mean, that's inclusive of classroom furniture?
No, this is just administration.
Where are we, I'm sorry?
Administration.
Yeah, where am I?
Page nine.
Page nine, $5,000.
Sorry, sorry.
Equipment side, okay.
Okay. So, then, one, two, page 10 is just a summary of mid-level administration.
We had a, we had an increase of 1,000 for other charges. I'm always skeptical, you know, just wondering what are other charges?
If you go back, because it's, this, page 10 is just a summary of the entire section, so if you flip through to page 12.
Oh, okay. Oh, it's ahead of time.
It's mileage, right, right. It's in front of the section.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay? So, page 11, this is, we've got a lot of things going on on page 11, so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, principals, we've added one, and this is where we were requesting to move the program manager for anchor points to a principal position. And then, under assistant principals, we actually have added 10 to this line item. That would be the eight elementary school teacher specialists that would be moved to assistant principals. And then, the two additional assistant principals at one at each high school.
So, that's 10, and we currently have eight. Okay, that's where you get the 18.
Yeah, and it's not that the, we're talking positions, not people here.
Right, right.
So, when we say move teacher specialist to APs, we're not literally speaking about moving the people, we're specifically speaking about moving the, changing the position.
And that was, what, $17,000 per move, wasn't that on the one slide?
That was the APA.
That was for the one APA.
APA was the only one that was singled out.
But that's $944,000.
Exactly, exactly.
That's a lot of classroom teachers.
That's a lot of money.
Two of them are full position.
To move those teacher specialists to assistant principals, and I looked at who, you know, the positions what's currently budgeted for these teachers, it's about $160,000. But you're taking all of that out of instruction and moving it to mid-level administration. So, the total dollar figure that you're moving to mid-level administration.
I just don't know that we can support a request for an assistant principal at every school.
I, I, if, personally, if you were asking me, I say no to the additional changing program manager to principal APA due to the fact that it's not a school.
Correct.
We had that argument last week, and right now, $160,000, that's two classroom teachers.
Correct, and.
Change, just to change teacher specialist, yeah.
The eight.
To APs.
Yeah.
And, and I also have a hard time supporting an extra one at each high school.
Especially if we have academic deans.
We have academic deans.
But I need to hear the reason for that, because we're talking discipline, right?
For the assistant principals at each high school?
High school, right.
So, if, just to remind us, we're, we're last year, that due to the deficit that we had to make up of $1.5 million, we had to, we had to get into people, we had to, we had to cut positions. So, we had cut the assistant principal out of the annex at Kent Island. We also cut an assistant principal out of the restructuring of that with Queen Anne's County High School, or at Kent Island High School. Since then, what we've learned is that the restructuring from the campus school to be able to facilitate an assistant principal at the annex, which we've done, we've moved an assistant principal out.
Correct.
So, we're down on assistant principal at Kent Island High School. We have a.
Yeah, that's, that's justifiable.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that, I.
Oh, okay, I thought you wanted justification too.
I think that that is.
But then, the one to Queen Anne's, why do we need one? For equity, or we have enough at Queen Anne's?
Well, there, there is a little bit of an equity piece, but I think there are also some unique challenges at Queen Anne's County High School. That was a request from the school. There's also, as we've talked about, expanding with early college, I think there's going to be more of an opportunity there from a leadership role to be able to oversee that.
Wouldn't the academic dean take on that role?
And our guidance counselors.
Well, there's, I, will they be a part of it? Absolutely. But I also think that there needs to be, you know, another administrator that would oversee that as well.
And right now, we're using specialists.
Well.
Fill in as a.
Not at the high school.
Deans, we're talking about.
No, no, oh, oh, high school, I'm sorry, I'm.
Talking about high school here.
I'm sorry, thank you.
So, does that make equal, just curious, equal number of APs at both schools?
If, if, if that was added, that's correct, that is correct.
But, I mean, we don't have an annex up here, I mean, that's kind of, that, that's really, I think, pulling.
I know that, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, I.
Campus for Kent Island High School matches the APs for Queen Anne's.
With, with, with the request would add it, would add the assistant principal back.
Yeah, no, that would be fine, because I think two assistant at each high school is equitable.
Exactly.
Granted, Kent Island would technically have three because of the annex.
But they would be at the annex.
However, I mean, that's a completely separate area.
They would be at the annex all day, correct?
Right, well.
Right. Yeah.
Yes, I mean, we've, we've basically moved an assistant principal over to annex to cover that.
Right, so she is basically, she is basically doing the ninth grade, okay? That's what, yeah, so.
So, this would put it back.
I'm okay with giving Kent Island high schools, I'm okay with doing that.
So, that's two.
Because that's a need.
That would be three for Kent Island High School, because there would be one.
And we're asking for two new.
Right, we're asking one for Queen Anne's and one for Kent Island. I'm okay with Kent Island.
Kent Island will have three, but one's in a different location, okay? I'm good with all that.
Because we have academic deans at both schools.
But we're not, we're not asking for two.
Curious about why we want another.
We would only be asking for one at Kent Island.
Help us justify why we need another assistant principal at each high school, including the main, one as the main campus at Kent Island.
Well, he just did.
You just said it's for the new.
No, no, he said.
Right, so, so, at Kent Island is to bring them back to where they were last year, because we eliminated that position as a cost-saving measure to make up the 1.5.
See, there's only one, there's only one at the high school right now, and then one at the annex, at Kent Island.
No, she, she.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
We're talking.
No, I don't think Queen Anne's, no, I don't agree.
So, we're only really thinking need, as a board, we're thinking a need of one.
Right, at Kent Island to put back what we took last year.
Right, right, right.
Okay, we're all on the same page with that, right?
Are we all on the same page with that? Yeah, I, yeah.
I just think that's much easier to justify.
Absolutely.
Just, just so that you're aware, the needs at Queen Anne's High School, I think, I don't even need to say it, are significantly different from the needs.
I agree with that.
At Ken Island High School. And that was a justification for them asking for that position.
Do we have a problem that we need to?
Yeah, I'm not hearing, I, I'm not, yeah, I guess I don't understand what the problem is.
And, and again, I can speak from a couple of months of experience, but from what I understand, the behaviors and the management of students was significant prior to a change that you made in administration there. It is significantly better, but it is taking, you know, every second of every person's time that they don't always have.
At Queen Anne's.
Yep, at Queen Anne's, to, to manage that. I would say.
How many students do we have onsite at Queen Anne's?
About eleven hundred.
And how many onsite at the main campus at Ken Island?
Just about twelve hundred each, give or take. The physical plan, obviously, is, is a little bit different, but I agree with the superintendent, there is a.
There's, there's a greater need for student support.
We've also looked at restructuring athletics there. We've done the pilot, which you recall, which has alleviated some of the support from administrator.
We took that, maybe review for the, I think we took the athletic director, they were, they wore two hats at one point.
Correct, and if you look at the assistant principal, if you look at Mr. Harding, what he does at, at Ken Island, the vast majority of what he does is athletics.
Okay.
And, and that requires a lot of his time, where he's not doing some other instructional things. But we've piloted some of that at, at Queen Anne's in a different structure. But I say that to say that we're trying to alleviate more support for the administration to support the student body in which they're responsible for leading.
And I thank you for that, because that has reprioritized my list now. My assistant principal prioritization has changed, just based on what you two have said. So I appreciate that.
So at Queen Anne's, let me, not to go away from that, at Queen Anne's, we have the assistant, what is the organization that's different than Ken Island? The assistant principal is also the athletic director.
So at Ken Island, Mr. Harding is, is the athletic director. At Queen Anne's County High School, we piloted this year where the athletic director is part-time teaching in the classroom, English, and then, part-time being the athletic director. So they gave up some of their planning, or their, you know, duties as far as teaching, to be able to take on some of that responsibility. The assistant principal there still oversees athletics. But the reason we did that was to alleviate some support to the administration for operations of the school.
So how is that going for the, the individual that's teaching in, I mean?
It's going very, very well.
Really? So that's a good.
You know, with anything, it's about having the right person for that particular job. And I'll say it, Ken Island, it works for them, what they're doing. And Queen Anne's, it has worked very well this year, doing what we're doing with that. I can't say enough about Mr. Wagner, what he's done there.
My recommendation is that we do the two high school assistant principals, one at each high school. I'm not in support of the other eight assistant principals at this time.
I think what, if, my personally, I just don't think we need that extra one at Queen Anne's.
I agree.
Only because you have broken a guy free with this pilot program. So he is a dedicated assistant principal, and unless we have something that we're having to solve, maybe, it might be necessary. Might be, it may be necessary next year, but right now, but, you know, with everything settled out, why don't we table that until next year? That would be my recommendation.
I agree with that.
I do too.
So we're back to one support.
For Ken Island High School.
But the TS is to the, to the AP, I just don't think it's a nonstarter.
I'm sorry, the what?
The teacher specialist to the.
I agree, I just can't support that.
No, me neither.
It's just hard for us to defend.
I, I have, I'm not in support of the principal level at the APA either.
Me neither.
It's not a school.
Just so you know, that if we do that, what we're just suggesting, we're reducing that number by two hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Including the APA as well? If we keep that one out too?
No, that's a different line.
No, that was, that's a different line, we're talking, that's the line right here.
Yeah, I'm only talking about assistant principals.
Okay, very good. So we are going to go with a recommendation of one.
So, when we take out the, the AP, the eight APAs for elementary schools, that's going to reduce that number significantly.
Oh, I have ten, it's only eight.
Want to, want to reduce it by a hundred and sixty thousand?
Ten.
It was ten to.
Well, no, because.
So it'll even be more than that?
It'll be, it'll be five hundred, or seven hundred and some thousand, because the entire salary was moved from the instructional budget into this.
Oh, I guess I was saying.
So the hundred and sixty was just the difference between current salary and APA salary.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
This is significant.
Yeah, so it's going to be a seven hundred thousand dollars.
So how many, how many, because I wrote down ten teacher specialists to change to.
Two at the high school and eight at the other schools.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
But, but the net really is.
A hundred and sixty.
Is two sixty-two, right? Because if you take away one of the APs, that's a hundred and one. And then, if you remove the one sixty, would, which really the net would, exactly, would be.
Right, but that, the difference between seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars and one sixty is going to move back to the instructional part of the budget, because currently, it's been taken out of there.
Right, but it's not new money that we're adding.
No, 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 no.
What I'm saying is the net.
Right, exactly.
We save seven hundred.
No, we.
No.
We saved a hundred and sixty on that one.
So it's eight sixty-two.
Well, we save two sixty-two if we add, yeah.
And two APAs, okay, or two APs, okay, all right. All right, so really, in the scheme.
So what it boils down to is that we don't support, we support one principal, I mean, one assistant principal at Ken Island High School.
Right.
But we do not support changing eight teacher specialists to assistant principals at our elementary schools.
Correct.
Correct?
Nor the program manager.
Or the Queen Anne's County High School.
Or the APA.
Oh, right, exactly.
All right, so that's going to take it to two seventy-nine.
All right, so then, in keeping with that, the nurse comes into the APA thing too.
So that can be taken out.
We have four schools, five schools in Centerville, one, two, three, four. We have fire department right back here. Do we need an onsite nurse for APA, based on the size of the town of Centerville and where our emergency services are located in collection, in correlation to? It's not a school.
What APA is, is that something that we've proven that we really do need onsite?
It was a request from the superintendent.
Right, from last week.
Age twenty-six.
I think one of the things that we've been looking at, and certainly, the program audit that we've just done, is looking at how we can provide more wraparound services to students. And I think that's where this request is coming from, that although we do house students there, that there is no part-time nurse that, that's onsite to provide direct assistance to that school.
Does a nurse come?
So students take meds there, or have to administer meds, students get sick there, just like they do at any other facility.
Right, and how are we handling that now?
There's, there's.
How are the meds dispensed now?
There, there's no one there. Now, if there's a, an emergency, they have the nurse from Centerville Elementary can come in support.
But we don't have any students that, in the course of their day, have to take a medication in that building?
Sure that we do.
So that's what I'm asking, what nurse comes in and does that?
There is not a nurse that comes in to do that.
The teacher, the student takes that on his own?
Or possibly the program manager.
We actually have students in charge of their own medication in there?
No.
No, the program manager.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, I misunderstood, I thought it, gotcha, 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 gotcha. That's why I asked that question.
Is there another way to do it, like, I mean, I know elementary schools need their nurses, but what about a nurse coming over once a day?
Or CNA. Certified nurse assistant, somebody to, to do, which costs less than an RN, is my point.
Well, that's a slippery slope. You get a CNA at one area, and then RNs and all the others.
Because we already did that.
Talking about the dollars.
We do, or?
I don't know, I, I mean, it, it sounds like if, if there's a nurse at CES, that they couldn't, I mean.
If there was an emergency.
We've got four school nurses in this town, and we've got emergency services in the backyard.
Where are the other nurses? CES is the closest.
Canard, Centerville.
It doesn't have to be a nurse to give medication, either.
The middle, I know, I know, I'm just thinking, um.
Because if you get, if you take, if your children go on a field trip, your doc, your teacher is in charge of their medication.
I, I, I got you.
So, we're not, we're not letting children take their own medication.
Exactly, exactly.
But, yet, you know, and I, I cannot justify fifty-five thousand dollars for a nurse.
I just can't either.
It would be nice in a real world, but.
How do you, how do you justify that with parents? Say I had a diabetic child at APA, how do you justify that with liability with parents and the child?
That you don't have the nurse, justify that you don't.
Are you asking us?
We can't.
That's what we're requesting.
Other than the medication piece, what, what other things are happening that we feel like a nurse should be there?
Well, Jen said, a diabetic shock or something.
If a student gets ill, and administering, just like in any normal school setting.
Remind me, how many students are there?
It varies, from time to time, I don't know.
The highest it can be is, we've had.
The highest is sixty?
We, well, we've had close to thirty, thirty-five there, normally in the spring. Now, I believe, we're about eighteen.
Right.
I'm sorry?
I'm listening, but I, I just heard what she said, you know, when we're looking at her people's.
You're allocating almost fifteen hundred dollars per child for a nurse.
That's what I was kind of getting at.
I mean, if you're thinking per people.
So, but if, if you, if you don't have an RN, my point is, you know, that's why I suggested a CNA, because the cost is significantly different, and it wouldn't need to be every day.
Isn't there a union for them? Like, wouldn't that have to be negotiated with this current nurses, like, the nurses in the.
Just talk about creative.
But, but I thought that in the past, we had moved away from that plan into RNs for a reason, and then, if we go back on that for one school, we're not being equitable. Well, one location, we're not being equitable.
School.
Well, that's why I can't support it at all. That's why I have a problem supporting it at all.
I mean, it's hard for me, like, I look at it as from a parent's point of view, and I look at it through a physical point of view. Fiscally, it doesn't work, but as, from a parent, I would, God, I would, I would just hate for a sick child, that life to be on us, because we said that we don't need a nurse out there. That, that's my struggle.
I think that's maybe the compromise is to bring the amount down. I mean, I can see where we can justify a smaller than a regular nurse.
I mean, would we be legally on the hook if something happens and we don't have medical staff there right then and there?
Not really a school, otherwise, we'd have to have one in this building.
Right.
That's correct.
And, do we already have the discussion about the Centerville middle, the Centerville Elementary School nurse just kind of coming over? Like, why don't, it's like right across the street, like, why would we be able to, like, help with the salary there if she's then working a dual role? You know, then we're looking at five, ten, I don't know, whatever you want to throw out, to then be overseeing both sites?
I can't justify fifty-five thousand dollars for a nurse sitting out there, and no one's sick, and no one has medical needs.
Less than a quarter of a mile away from another nurse that we're paying for. And do, and do all positions.
Right, right.
We, we clearly do not recognize this as a school. However, we do recognize it as a need.
Oh, gosh.
And I'm also thinking, in, in an emergency situation, we call emergency services anyway.
Exactly.
That doesn't mean we should get rid of our school nurses by any means.
Right, right.
What could we come down to?
Yeah, the.
What, would that cost, just a practitioner?
I'm not sure. I don't think we can do that based on what Jen said, negotiating. We have determined.
We have to go through that through the negotiation system with the union, because nurses are in that.
We're employing RNs now, in that position for a reason.
I could be wrong, but I think that we need Mr. Farley to.
If we don't, if we don't create the position as an RN, we create it as LPN or something, and have a salary for that, I don't think we're in trouble.
I don't know, that's something that Mr. Farley would probably have to answer for us, because I don't know how that.
Yeah.
We're, we're looking it up right now.
That would be like us employing a certain type of teacher out there.
With no certification that other teachers had to have.
Say, well, it's a program, we don't need certified teachers out there, and then you're going to have the union, there's going to be, there'll be a big problem.
Which locations, Ms. Langriff, have LPNs currently?
Sure, but there are four of them, right?
There are four of them, um. So we do have not a hundred percent.
That's what I'm saying, we already have.
Okay, see, I thought we, maybe they had tried to move it towards all RNs.
Maybe it's like a Bayside.
Then that's justifiable.
So the point, so the point was, I hear the, the concern about the fifty-five. So if, if, if it's the number that is the issue, then let's cut down on the number, because the need is there. So if we employed someone for part-time, who is not an RN, but perhaps a LPN, or I don't know if we can do a CNA, but that doesn't have the same fifty-five K figure, but still fills the need.
I, I would, I'm definitely willing to look at that. As long as it's, like I said, we're in the parameters of what we're supposed to be.
And we can look at it from the perspective of a part-time position?
Yes.
As opposed to a full-time? I think that's more feasible for this location.
Wait a minute, how, how do you know when the, my question would be, when is the part-time? If somebody's going to get sick, they're going to get sick when the nurse leaves?
That's exactly right.
Or the nurse isn't there?
That's exactly right.
So what's the point?
You haven't achieved anything, you're exactly right.
You've achieved nothing.
You're exactly right.
I think one point O is still right, still have it.
I just find it hard to, to have someone, at the, at the maximum, the majority of the time, except for the end of the school year, the maximum amount of kids out there is thirty kids, correct? Because I've never seen the numbers.
About thirty-five.
Okay.
Could have been the hottest.
So, I just can't justify fifty-five thousand dollars for someone to sit out there all day, five days a week.
I agree.
Which was the point of saying part-time. But if you're saying, you, you can't justify, it's either all RN or nothing at all, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Well, I think it's full-time or nothing at all.
Right, exactly.
I'm not sure they're saying RN, I think they're just saying full-time, because if you're doing part-time.
You're gambling with when the child's going to get sick.
Full-time's something lower than a RN, is what we're saying.
But why are we not continuing to explore the Centerville Elementary nurse playing a dual role option? That seems like a no-brainer in some ways.
To see what her schedule is.
Right, would she, is this a position that should then be, you know, covering both?
Right. Can she cover here if there were to be an emergency?
Right, and what would need to be changed?
And apparently, that's happening now.
Is there something about how we change a little bit of the salary?
How many emergencies have we had out there?
I guess my question is, how can we even say Center, right now, what's our plan? Someone gets sick in that building, what do we do? What's our process? Someone gets sick in that building, and we need a nurse, what do we do?
Someone over here is going to have to answer that, not me.
I'm just asking, what is our process?
If it is possible, the student can go over to Centerville Elementary, or the nurse possibly could come over there, depends on what's happening, you know, at the time. If it is meds, I do believe that the program manager dispenses meds, but that's it.
Okay. In case of an injury that would require ambulance, or something like that.
Like you would any school.
Exactly, exactly.
So what we're currently doing is the Centerville Elementary nurse situation, is that right?
As it's possible there, I think about five hundred and fifty students over at Centerville Elementary, younger ones with.
How many emergencies have we had at APA?
Well, and I guess I'm asking.
That required.
And, and how often has she been required to leave her location at Centerville Elementary and come here? If we can go there, you know, the parent, the student has a migraine or something like that, I have a little, a bug flu in my ear, take the student over there, I get all that. Is there, is there a trend where she needs to leave her position over there and come here? Because now, we are really talking dual roles. Now, we are talking about overloading one particular nurse out of all fourteen. I don't think that's feasible either.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm good leaving it just as it is right now.
Where are they, Rob, where are those four? Is it at Bayside, Ken Island, Canard?
No, they're, they're different places. There's one at Southersville Middle School, Bayside has one, Queen Anne's County High School has one.
The LPNs?
LPNs, mhm. And I don't know where the fourth one is.
I was kind of figuring, but maybe one is like at Bayside, and the RN is at KIS, but, but no, none of that makes sense there, except for the Bayside, maybe, but Queen Anne's County by themselves, they've got an LPN.
Right, but you got Centerville right next door that has an RN.
Has an RN, okay.
Right. And then, you have an RN from the health department, Mrs. Kaufman, that oversees everything that goes on with all of the nurses in the county.
Maybe we need to just look at a couple of different options, take Carrie's option of looking at the nurse from CBS, and take the other option as a full-time.
And I'd like to see how many emergencies we've had.
Whatever the lesser of the RN is.
And how many emergencies we've had here at APA.
So, because we could sit and talk about this for hours.
Oh, right, right, right.
Yeah.
And it is one fifty-five, ladies and gentlemen, so I just wanted to let everyone know that. You have an appointment, right?
Yes.
So, do we want to stop here, or do we, what do we want to do?
Well. I'm not comfortable with not having the input of another board member, who is new, and needs to know.
I'm in learning mode, right?
Right.
I'm going to try and get Robin later today.
This is discussion, and, and everyone has to have the fair chance to participate, I agree.
We have a deadline here, right? February seventh.
Well, now that we understand, at least we got through all of the slides.
Well, I don't know how we can have a.
We can kind of.
No, I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, we need to get a picture.
Let me suggest this, in the past, what we've done is, we've had the slideshow, we have this in front of us, we can do our due diligence at, at off-time, and then, any questions, we could submit as, as a, we can't talk, email each other about the question.
Right, right. Right, right.
We can submit it so that we have those answers for our next meeting and kind of, we can move forward from there.
Our next meeting is supposed to be the superintendent's recommended budget. So she needs, she needs some idea, we need some idea as to...
But that's not going to happen, because we don't have, we don't have negotiations.
We usually don't.
We don't, we just begin what we think.
We didn't last year either.
But we need to, you know.
Which is it, it's estimated in here.
Right, I understand that.
Even when we presented to the commissioners, we didn't have negotiations completed.
Well, I...
That's just a monster in the closet.
It's not going to be ready by the 7th.
That's the white elephant in the room, right? Or the pink elephant.
It's not. I mean, I'm with Jen. We all sit and we all go through it, submit questions to you, you pass them on, you get them, we take it from there, and then, but...
Would you like to change the date of the board presentation?
We have to.
To give, it's next week.
That's for the 7th.
To give you, mhm.
But it has to be when?
Not till March.
Right, March.
But our changes need to be... Our March board meeting is the 7th also.
7th of March?
So generally, right after that board meeting is when you approve a budget that we submit to the county commissioners.
Well, that gives us, that gives us enough time to be ready to approve it. To me, it does.
No, the 7th is next Wednesday.
No, 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 I'm talking about by March 7th.
Oh.
When she present, if she were to present it at the March 7th meeting, we should be prepared to...
Accept it.
Accept it.
Or deny it.
Or deny it, one or the other.
But by then, we will have weeded through it.
Exactly.
When is our, is our meeting March 7th?
We need to get the word out right now that that change is going to take effect on our calendar. It's not going to be a budget presentation on the 7th of February, it will be on the March meeting.
Well, yeah, that'll go out.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's not...
That needs to be done right now.
Well, we're having a budget meeting February 21st.
We got two of them, I think.
The 14th and...
14th and the 21st.
That's Ash Wednesday, so that's going to be...
What we need is, I mean, there's no reason why we can't vote to approve a budget one, four sessions.
Before he, right, that's right.
We don't have to have a full session, it's all public, right?
Right, exactly.
So we could maybe make some clarifications. Is it next Wednesday? We have another meeting.
I think we just need to announce.
Well, next Wednesday is our board meeting, our monthly board meeting.
Right.
But I think we just need to announce it, that that's when, whenever, if it's going to be 14th or 21st or whatever.
We just need to do public announcement.
That that's going to be the presentation and the vote for it, so.
Well, I guess we need to do that at the actual, the March meeting, correct?
No, the March meeting is presented right now to the public as a budget presentation meeting.
No, that's February, I mean...
In the February meeting, that's what I mean.
No, no, what I'm saying is change it to the March 7th.
Although that's when she goes to the commissioners.
Afterwards.
That's when it's submitted to the...
But we could, we can decide on it during one of those work sessions in February.
Right, and so just, we'll just need to make the announcement of when it's going to be presented and you'll vote on it at that point. It gives you more time.
Right.
So we're saying it now, we'll post to the website, and when we have our meeting on February 7th next week.
Right.
Then we'll say it again.
Exactly. That we're going to shoot for March 7th for the, yes.
For the presentation end.
For the presentation, yes.
Okay, so we just said two different things.
We did?
We need to get that language out of the notification right now.
So you're saying not to vote or present on it for school board until March 7th?
Oh, no, 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 no.
I thought you were saying earlier, later in February.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we are present on March 7th.
Probably the 21st then.
Right, that's what I'm thinking. We have two more.
Okay, usually what happens is usually the superintendent presents their budget to the board.
Right.
So this is what I recommend that you submit to the county commissioner.
Oh, okay.
And then there's a 30-day period for you all to review it and make whatever recommendations, say, no, we don't support whatever the superintendent, and then we make adjustments to that.
Okay.
And then that is what actually gets approved and submitted to the county commissioners. So what I'm hearing is, we're not going to have a superintendent's recommended budget.
Not on February 7th.
But you could, is what she's saying. You could...
You could do this. You could do this.
Yeah, I think it's, well, I think that's the point of the work session, so that you can get your questions answered. We pare it down to a place where you're comfortable voting on what we've discussed.
I thought that's the way we did it last year.
No, we didn't, well, maybe last year we did.
That's generally the way it happens.
Well, before we did it, because then that way was the way the superintendent could show, this is my dream right here, you know, this is what we really need, and then we have to cut it down.
Oh, yeah, that's how we used to have to do it, until last year, yes.
But we still did that. We still presented to the commissioners a dream budget that we had already pared down, and we pared it down again.
Can we rec, I recommend that we, you have enough time if we get our questions answered on the 14th, and then the 21st, do the presentation, we vote, and that way you're ready to go March 7th.
And then it cuts, and then it cuts out that 30-day period, because you will have had ample time to ask your questions even before the final presentation for the public and for you to make your vote on.
But I...
I mean, that just cuts down on some time, it gives you more time to, you know, have these conversations, and then we present it to you, at that point, you will have agreed on what, I don't want to present to you something that we've...
We're going to pare down again.
Right, if we discussed half of it and we understand your will, then let's finish the conversation.
That's exactly right.
Let's be on the same page as a group before we take it to the public, which is where it goes to the commissioners and still comes back to us, and we still have to pare it down.
Which is not to say that you might not still have some questions or want to say some things, you know, for...
Yeah, I thought that that's what, what the plan was here, so...
So the 21st, okay, to give us enough time?
The 21st, I'm back, yes.
So we won't have a budget meeting again until the 21st of February?
No, till the 14th.
No, 14th.
Oh, gotcha.
14th.
With a goal of settling it on the 21st, so she can present it the following Wednesday.
Right.
Or the first Wednesday of March.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Does everybody make sense?
It does, thank you, and I have to say that, thank you guys.
Go, Carrie, go, okay.
Yeah.
Because that's still three weeks before she presents to the commissioners. She hasn't presented, two weeks.
Yes.
Two weeks. 23rd.
Is March...
Well, we have a work session on the 14th.
Correct.
But she'll actually be presenting her budget to the public on the 21st.
No.
On March, on March 7th.
Oh, I thought we said the 21st.
I thought we said the 21st.
You...
Me too, Neil. So we're, I think we're all confused here.
We need to present to the public in our regular monthly meeting.
Well, we can do that, we can do that on February 21st.
That's not our regular monthly meeting.
But then she presents on the 7th of March.
I thought we had already decided that.
No, that's not what I'm...
Well, apparently, somebody's not understanding, because I think you and I must be on the same page.
Maybe.
Because on the 21st, we, we make our decision on the 21st with, between now and the 14th.
All of our final changes.
Yeah, all of our final changes will be done, right.
She gets with Robin and gets them all on paper, and that's her presentation for March 2, March 7th.
But we can approve it on this, on the 21st.
We've already seen the presentation as it is now, now we've worked to get it to her to present to the public.
Right.
Yes, yes.
So on the 21st of February, we can say...
Settle on what she's taking out to the public.
This is the budget that we would like for you to take to the public.
And the commissioners.
Does that make sense, Neil?
Yes.
Is that what you understand?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, okay, so we're all on the same page then. Okay, all right.
So, on the 21st of February, we will have, by then, we will have agreed upon, you know, how we are pairing down this budget.
That might be our final...
And then I will, at that same meeting, present the budget on the 21st of February, and we continue with the presentation to, submitting that budget request to the county on March 7th as scheduled.
Well, if we're still making changes and suggestions and agreeing to it on the 21st, you still think you can present it right then and there with those...
Because I won't be changing anything after you've agreed upon it.
But I think we're using the 21st as a work...
We shouldn't be making any changes after the 14th. We should come in here on February 14th, and, because all of our, we have two weeks, all of our answers will be, all of our questions will be answered, okay, try that when we're done, and on the, when we come into our work session...
I'm a little concerned about that, because I thought the 14th and the 21st were going to be work sessions.
But, but I think perhaps...
Well, we can do half the work session on the 21st.
But she, we can't ask her to present to us on that, she doesn't need, you don't need to present back to us, even with the changes. We would have approved the changes then.
I don't think she's presenting to us per se as the public.
Right.
That's on March 7th, though.
Right.
Right, there doesn't have to be a presentation to us in the meantime, another one. We might still be making changes right up until 2 o'clock on the 21st, that you get on paper for your presentation on March 7th. I thought the 21st was a working session as well.
So what you're saying, March 7th is just a presentation to the public, is this is what the board has agreed on?
What the board has agreed on.
Yeah, that's our final budget that we've approved to present.
Until they cut and then we have to do that.
Right, 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 right. But I thought we had two work sessions to get to that point.
It's just a formality of getting out to the public.
I don't know. I don't know how much work we have left to do.
Only on page 11.
I know, that's why I'm concerned, maybe more work session isn't enough.
And the first 10 pages, and the first 10 pages were all advertisements somehow.
I'm going to have to...
Just concentrate on the presentations, I need more than this.
Well, our changes are the presentation, that's the thing.
No, concentrate on this, because this is what we need to decide on these items that she's presenting more so.
Well, and those items are what's in this file.
Correct, right, right, right.
I mean, I'm just going to focus on your slides to come up with my...
Right, right.
So on the 14th, I'm going to have to Skype in, because I'm going to be at the AASA conference. Okay. Technology straight.
Having fun with that noise?
All right, so are we, are we done then? Are we approved?
We need that PI opposition.
I think so.
That's great.
...on the 5th of 7th as a regular meeting, and then we'll come back on the work session on the 21st, and then the 4th, she's going to present on the 21st, as I said before, and then on the 7th, you're going to actually adopt the budget and do like that.
Correct?
Correct.
Correct?
I think we're finally there, yeah.
Correct, I'm just worried it's not enough time.